The technique is great, Doc.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Town Hall. We're gonna get things going here. Today is Tuesday, October fourteenth. We're here for our regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. First order of business, as always, pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the land acknowledgement statement. The town of South Kingstown pays homage to the indigenous people and land in which the town is now located. But this acknowledgement serves as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with Anarganset Tribe, whose land and water we benefit from today. Next, we have the roll call.
Council President Mackenzie.
Here.
Council Vice President Marin.
Here.
Council Member Bergner.
Here.
Council Member Ali.
Here.
Council Member Wedgemont.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. It's gonna bring us to item four, approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve item four, A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. It's now gonna bring us to item five. We have an interview tonight. Ken Burke looking to be reappointed to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Good evening. Kenny Burke, twenty-eight, South Glen Court. And yes, I'd like to reapply to be part of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. As you may know, I'm a year-long bike rider, ride back and forth to work. Try to ride out to the town events when I can, not tonight. And just like to bring that institutional knowledge to this committee again.
All right, thank you, Ken. All of us know ya. We're familiar with ya. We know you're passionate about the BPAC workings. We also know you're involved in other aspects of the town two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary committee, and you're an integral part of the three-hundredth anniversary committee. But tell us what's going on in BPAC. What's happening?
We've got a lot of things going on, working closely with the town staff, Public Services Director, talking about upcoming capital improvement plan projects, trying to weave in what we're calling low-to-no-cost enhancements for pedestrian and bicycle safety for the benefit of the townsfolk.
All right. Any questions for Ken? All right, thank you, Ken. Keep up the good work. All right, do I hear a motion regarding Ken Burke's reappointment to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee?
Make a resolution to appoint Ken Burke.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. It's gonna bring us now to item six, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. That is now gonna bring us to item seven, licenses. A is a resolution granting a temporary mass gathering permit to Sons of Liberty of Kingstown Road, Wakefield, to conduct the Whiskey Wonderland on Friday, December twelve, twenty-twenty-five, from five PM to nine PM, and Saturday, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, from twelve PM to eight PM. Application by Paul Baptista. Come on up.
There we go. Cool. Thank you for hearing me. Like you said, it'll be December twelfth from five to nine. That's Friday. Saturday, December thirteenth, from one to eight. It'll be our eleventh Whiskey Wonderland, and there'll be food provided by Providence Food Trucks. The artisans will be curated by Field of Artisans. I'll be acquiring traffic detail, inside fire detail, EMT, and a police detail. On Saturday as well, we'll be providing rebate and vouchers for Ubers. Since it's a longer event, in case people stay longer, they can Uber in and Uber out, especially if people don't wanna deal with parking, because it's always, you know, hairy. But we'll be having parking on both sides of the mill, as well as across the street at the pump house.
Awesome. This is a great event. I can't remember if I went last year. I think I went two years ago. It's packed. It's wonderful. The artisans all in that back space.
Yeah, it's a fun time. Yeah, we'll have the barrel tree. The back will be open. The indoor plan is attached to the application, as you can see.
Well, I concur with Councilor Bergner. The holiday shopping you can get done and buy from local businesses at this event is extraordinary, so excuse the noise.
Well, thank you.
Motion to approve item seven A.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Good luck. Notably great. See you then.
Have a good one.
All right, it's gonna bring us to item B, a resolution granting vicshaling and holiday sales licenses to Brew Fifty-Six LLC, doing business as Brew Fifty-Six. Fifty-Six Fortin Road, Kingston, Rhode Island. Application by Bryce Alexander Maroney.
Thank you, sir. I'm Bryce Alexander Maroney.
I'm Eric Santos.
And we just recently finished the renovation and refurnishing of Brew Fifty-Six, located at Fifty-Six Fortin Road in Kingston, Rhode Island. And we're very excited to open and answer any questions you guys may have.
Nice. Is this the location that was formerly Brew?
Yes.
Correct.
All right. And when do you guys plan to open? How soon?
As soon as we're allowed to open.
Nice.
So tomorrow.
Yes. We are like staffed and ready for tomorrow morning, if approved.
All right.
So just to be clear, it's... I was just at the Thai restaurant. It's... If I'm standing at the Thai restaurant, it's to the right, correct? In the corner? No?
So the Fortin Road is like a zig. We're like all the way at the end, right before you hit Old North. So it's behind the plaza with the mosque, Mediterranean Food Place, Kmart, all of that. So we're behind. It's a standalone building.
Okay.
It was light blue, like kind of electric blue. Now it's dark green.
Yeah. We just changed the... Gave it a little bit of a facelift.
There's something next to the Thai place going in then, too.
Yes.
Gentlemen, what do we serve in that Brew Fifty-Six?
Brew Fifty-Six. So we have a light fare to start. We definitely like to expand slowly over time. We're doing more breakfast sandwiches, lunch sandwiches, pastries, bagels to start. The foundation of the business is coffee, so we have fresh brewed coffee that we brew over cool water and ice into five-gallon kegs. It is pressurized by nitrogen, so every cup of coffee that we serve is like the consistency of a coffee that was freshly brewed. So that's where the Brew Fifty-Six comes from.
Sounds wicked exciting, so I can't wait to stop it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is that the nitro coffee I'm hearing you say?
So it's not nitro in a sense like how Nitro Bar does it. It's powered by nitrogen, but the nitro coffee is a little bit different. The ratio is tweaked, so there's more foam. There's like a head, if you will, like a beer would be. Regular nitrogen-driven coffee doesn't have that head or the foaminess. So it's like exactly like freshly served iced coffee.
All right. What time you open it? What time you closing? How many days a week?
Eight AM to four PM, Sunday through Saturday.
All right, nice. Any other questions?
No. Motion to approve item seven B.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? One last thing. If I come in Saturday morning, what should I get? Or I can ask it when I get there. You don't have to answer that now.
I will say, all of the staff already has their own personal choices. I'm an espresso guy, but we have a full spread of everything. The iced coffee is great. It's from one of the oldest family-run and owned coffee roasters in the country, which is located right in Providence, Rhode Island. So all of the... You can't miss.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
All right, that's gonna bring us to item C, a resolution granting a vicshaling license to Justin Fontaine Restaurants LLC, doing business as Melgy's River Edge Cafe, Main Street, Wakefield. Application by Justin Fontaine. Justin, if you are here, I invite you to come on up. Or if anyone in the audience is here on behalf of Justin Fontaine Restaurant LLC. Nicole, have we heard anything?
They had confirmed, as far as I was aware, so...
All right, we'll hold this one for now. If I'm correct, this is approving the transfer of the license?
Yeah, it's just transferring the ownership.
Got it.
Yep.
All right, so we'll move on to item D, a resolution granting vicshaling and holiday sales licenses to DDM LLC, doing business as Jennifer's Chocolates, Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield. Subject to approval from the Rhode Island Department of Health. Application by Dana Dowdell. Dana?
Hi.
Welcome.
How are you?
Good.
Good evening. My name is Dana Dowdell, and I'm very grateful to be here. I'm a South County girl through and through. My father was a commercial fisherman down in Galilee. I attended South Kingstown High School, I think. Did you go to South Kingstown?
Twenty-eleven.
Me, too.
Let's go.
It feels like ages ago, I'll tell ya. I went to the University of Rhode Island. I got my bachelor's degree, my master's degree there. My mom is a business owner down on Boone Street in Anarganset, and my closest friends continue to raise their families here. Actually moved to Connecticut in twenty thirteen to pursue my career, and I often say that I've been searching for a reason to come back to Wakefield since. And so when we fast forward to July twenty-first of this year, I received a group text from Jennifer Dowell, who's the owner of Jennifer's Chocolates, and we are not related, similar, but not related at all. And she was letting up a number of her former employees know that she was retiring and selling her business. And I worked for Jen when I was in college, and I used to dream of owning the business one day. I would sit there and read through the Nassau Candy catalog and pick out things and... Very lucky, because with the help of our two attorneys and Justin Gallant, who helped facilitate the sale, we closed on it this past Thursday. So with your approval, I hope to build on what Jen accomplished over the past twenty-nine years. She was a community staple, offering small-batch handmade chocolates, delicious candies, and balloons for all occasions. And based on the responses to Jen announcing her retirement, I have huge shoes to fill. She was clearly, you know, part of many people's celebrations throughout the twenty-nine years, but I'm very honored that she trusted me with her business, and I'm very excited to have found a way to come home.
All right, nice. Congrats.
Thank you.
Awesome. Motion to approve item seven D.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just love Jennifer's Chocolates. I just want to let you know.
Thank you. I'm excited. I'm nervous, but I'm very...
You're gonna be great.
Thank you.
I just was in the mall right before this meeting, and I noticed that the store that she had to sign up. So I'm super happy that you're here.
Thank you.
You're there.
I was in the mall on Friday. Around six forty, I got my haircut at the haircut place. Went across the Pow Science, bought some toys, right before everything closed at seven, and then was already locked in. They had to open the doors to let me out.
They take it very seriously. Jeff Levy is... He doesn't mess around. Doesn't mess around.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right, that's now gonna bring us to the Town Manager Report. Jim?
Thank you. We will start off tonight with... We have several items. We'll start off tonight with the update by the School Building Committee and the School Facilities Project by Kate Turner, and Phil Conte's here as well.
So while you're walking, this is the first monthly one, so we'll see you not in two weeks, but in a month, right? Because we've moved, just for the public to know as well.
That's good to know for me, too. Kate Massenanti, the Chair of the School Building Committee. We're gonna have, from the school building perspective, we have two asks from you tonight. One is going to be the appointment of a member for our change task force. And then the next, I'm gonna pass off to the team. We have put forward a recommendation for the third-party code review, and we'll be looking for that, for an approval, but the team is gonna do the announcements for that, so thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Let me pull my presentation up, and we'll go through our updates. All right, so today we will work through the updates to our project schedule, giving an update as to where we stand with the current construction progress, give an update on the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and the soils we have on site, looking for a recommendation to award for the third-party code review, and looking for an appointment for the change order task force. So first item of business, as you can see where we are on the red line. In front of us, we are at the tail end of our permitting process. As I'll show on the next slide, at the end of this month, we are looking to submit for our full building permit application through the town's building department. Later in the agenda and in our update, the appointment of the third-party code review is going to be to assist in the review of the permit application and of all of the permit drawings. It is a very large project, as you all are aware, so bringing in a third-party code review, code consultant, to assist with the building department and union fire districts in their review of the permit documents. So it is more of an assist to the town. We are out to bid for the remaining bid packages for GMP number two. That is everything else we have left in our construction contract. And we are underway about, you know, a little over a month into construction at this point. So looking at some of the key milestones we have up in front of us, as we mentioned, building permit application, looking to come in, looking to be submitted at the end of this month. Mid-February, these dates have moved a little bit. We are looking to get the bids in for all of the remaining construction packages. So this has shifted by about a month.
You said February, but do you mean December?
I did. I'm not sure why I said February. Thank you. December fifteen for the remaining bid packages. So that has shifted about a month from our initial... It was originally in November, and it has shifted to December. So as we've approved GMP number one for our early bid packages that are related to our site work, our structural steel, and our concrete, that work remains underway. We have reviewed the schedule in relation to the impact of moving this a month further. And at this point, for the bid packages we are looking for a recommendation on, there is no impact to our substantial completion date. Gilbain has done a full study of what it would take to push the award out a month for these final bid packages. It's actually a recommendation to ensure that we are giving the bidders more time to digest additional information that the design team has issued, its clarifications, its coordination issues between the trades. So a lot of these... During this process, questions will come up. The architects, engineers will submit their responses. So with that additional information, we want to be able to give the bidders a chance to give a full bid. If there is information that is not fully captured, then it becomes a change order later in the process. So we want to take advantage of the competitive bidding environment to be able to get the most complete set of bids possible. So we're making this recommendation because there is no negative impact on the schedule. We want to be able to have that full and complete bid and reduce the amount of changes to... Because of the additional information. So that pushes us into the January because of the holidays, with the bids being due on the fifteenth. There are scope reviews and vetting of the bids once they come in. So we are looking, after returning from the holidays, to get a recommendation from Building Committee on January eighth and in front of this, back in front of the council on January twelfth for an approval of the final construction contract. So we'll pause there and answer any questions.
So that would mean that we would know how close we are to the hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar mark, right? For all... Because all the big packages are out with that, correct?
For the... Yes, for the high school portion of that one fifty. Yes, because that also includes Curtis Corner, which is a separate scope of work, yes.
Perfect.
All right, and then moving on to our ride milestones, looking at our sixty percent construction document approval, design development's already been approved as we've moved into this next phase of ride approvals. We're looking at the end of November roughly for the sixty percent construction document approval. This isn't really a tight deadline. Again, we're proceeding with the work that's already underway, that's already been approved by Ride. So while we're expecting it at the end of November, it's not necessarily a time-sensitive matter. We are also looking at the Curtis Corner demolition and site stabilization package being approved by Ride at the end of December. And that is going to be through an expedited review, because it is a smaller scope of work, rather than going through the multiple phases and steps that the larger projects go through. So taking a look at construction activities, four-week look ahead as yesterday being a holiday. As we move forward, we do have J.L. Marshall mobilizing to be able to do some form work for our foundations and begin placing rebar and pouring concrete within the next week for our foundation walls and footings. So that is very exciting, as we start to see the skeleton, the structure of the building come out of the ground. It's one of the most exciting parts of the project.
Are we documenting this, like, I'm looking to you, video or whatever, so that we can create some PR pieces?
I think I have them in the presentation, actually, the drone photos. Yeah, so Gilbain does monthly. Here we are. So this is before any of the exciting things, you know, before we scraped all the topsoil, before we imported the structural fill, before they compacted and got to grade. A lot of work has happened since then, and this photo was taken sometime in September. I'm not sure exactly what the date was. But they do this monthly, where they'll come and they'll do drone photos of the site, so it makes for a kind of nice time lapse at the end to be able to put it into a presentation. Yes. So in addition to Gilbain doing their drone photos, Leftfield also does have a site representative that submits daily report with photos, so you see daily progress on what the contractors are doing, which reflects in these photos. It's amazing how quickly this changes. At the time we issued this report, this is what it looked like. It doesn't look like this if you were to go to site today. It's really quite remarkable. So the photos you're looking at are the compacted structural fill, so that is going to be the base in which the building is built on, as well as the scraping of Area A, which is gonna be where the three-story academic tower is going to be. As we move into Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, as we've continued to report, there is an area outside of the existing woodshop where there were a few areas of soils that had elevated levels of TPH. At our last report, we let you know that a release letter would be submitted to the Rhode Island Department of Education. That is typical anytime you find soils that are above a certain criteria. So the letter was issued. We did receive our response from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. It was a very typical kind of boilerplate response with the next steps outlined as to what we're going to do. So with that, it does come with, as we move forward into the project and get ready to address that area in two thousand and twenty-seven, we are going to have to do additional public notices, additional butter meetings to discuss the soils and to come up with ultimately what our remediation plan is going to be, whether it's going to be containment or removal of those soils. So there's likely going to be some additional sampling that's going to be done in that area, just of the superficial sample, superficial soils that'll be remaining at the end of the project. That won't be done until after the school is demolished again in two thousand and twenty-seven. There is language in the letter that discusses the fact that no work is to happen on-site until this public notice is held and remediation plans are submitted. It is important to note that we have done a lot of work to delineate the difference between the Phase One, where the high school is being constructed, and the Phase Two, where the old school will be demolished. There is no impacted soils on the site where the new school is being constructed. So our environmental engineer has gone back to Ride M and said, "Can you please modify the letter to clearly delineate between those?" Because we have clearly delineated that on our end, so much so that our permit specifically excludes that scope of work. So we don't expect any issues in having to stop work on the existing high school. There'll be no impact to new construction, and we're awaiting the revised letter from Ride M that includes that written language, separating the two phases.
Any questions on that?
Just to be clear, Kate, for the public, there's no active contamination. This is something that was found from sometime in the far past, and it's just sitting there inert.
Correct. Yes, so it is the several... And it's a very small concentrated area outside of the existing woodshop, which used to be an auto body shop. The samples were found between seven and ten feet in depth. So they're pretty far down there. They have not contaminated the groundwater. Groundwater sampling was done, and at this point, until you disturb them, they're just sitting there. So that's why the additional superficial samples will be reviewed, and then a final remediation plan will be submitted to Ride M. But more than likely, it will be encapsulated and contained, because again, it's so far down, and it's not going to be disturbed.
Thank you.
And Kate, you don't need any action from us, in fact, probably for another year on this particular problem, correct?
Close to two years, yeah.
Close to two years.
We're pretty far out. We're pretty far out, but once you have the information, you need to report it. So we submitted our letter to them, you know, pretty far in advance, so they're aware of it, but no action is needed.
Well, I'm glad this is not delaying our project, so thank you for the update on that.
Yes. So are we. butter meetings to discuss the soils and to come up with ultimately what our remediation plan is going to be, whether it's going to be containment or removal of those soils. So there's likely going to be some additional sampling that's going to be done in that area, just of the superficial sample, superficial soils that'll be remaining at the end of the project. That won't be done until after the school is demolished again in 2027. There is language in the letter that discusses the fact that no work is to happen on-site until this public notice is held and remediation plans are submitted. It is important to note that we have done a lot of work to delineate the difference between the Phase 1, where the high school is being constructed, and the Phase 2, where the old school will be demolished. There is no impacted soils on the site where the new school is being constructed. So we, our environmental engineer has gone back to Ride M and said, can you please modify the letter to clearly delineate between those because we have clearly delineated that on our end, so much so that our permit specifically excludes that scope of work. So we don't expect any issues in having to stop work on the existing high school. There'll be no impact to new construction, and we'll be, we're awaiting the revised letter from Ride M that includes that written language separating the two phases.
Any questions on that?
Just to be clear, Kate, for the public, there's no active contamination. This is something that was found from sometime in the far past, and it's just sitting there inert.
Correct. Yes, so it is, the several, and it's a very small concentrated area outside of the existing wood shop, which used to be an auto body shop. The samples were found between seven and 10 feet in depth. So they're, they're pretty far down there. They have not contaminated the groundwater. Groundwater sampling was done, and at this point, until you disturb them, they're, they're just sitting there. So that's why the additional superficial samples will be reviewed, and then a final remediation plan will be submitted to Ride M. But more than likely, it will be encapsulated and contained because, again, it's, it's so far down, and it's, it's not going to be disturbed.
Thank you.
And Kate, you don't need any action from us, in fact, probably for another year on this particular problem, correct?
Close to two years, yeah.
Close to two years.
We're, we're pretty far out, we're pretty far out, but once, once you have the information, you need to report it. So we submitted our letter to them, you know, pretty far in advance. So they're aware of it, but no action is needed.
Well, I'm glad this is not delaying our project. So thank you for the update on that.
Yes. So are we. All right, so I'll pause here. The next item that I have up for discussion is the recommendation to award. I'm not sure if that is a separate agenda item, so I'll pause and...
Yeah, we'll take that up now. So maybe give us an idea as to what this entails, inform us as to what it is, why it's needed, and then we'll entertain a vote on it.
All right. So the third-party code review is an independent entity that specializes in reviewing international building code, NFPA fire code, as well as Rhode Island, local Rhode Island code. And they will look through the permit drawings and specifications for the existing, or for the new building, and they will determine if there are any areas in which, you know, based on their interpretation of the code, there needs to be any changes, modifications, or if all of the drawings are in compliance with all of the required codes. So it is a, it's a third-party service outside of the design team, the architects, and the construction management team to assist the building department and the union fire department or union fire district in their review. Typically, that is done by the AHJs, but because of the size of this project, having a third party to come on and assist in that review will alleviate any bog downs of those departments and allowing them to continue to do their day job without having to pause everything that they've got going on to focus on this particular project. So we did receive two bids for that service, one by Plan Review Services LLC and the second by Four Leaf Inc. We did check all of their qualifications. They are more than qualified to perform this scope of work. So we look at, again, there are some kind of forms that are required, but we look at the capacity, you know, the work that they have going on currently, what their staff's qualifications are, and any differentiating factors, if they have any legal proceedings, and if they have a, if they are or on their team have any minority or women business enterprises. So those are all part of the qualification scoring. So they, again, both being very well-qualified. A few differentiators, Four Leaf has done work with the town before. The building department is familiar with that organization. That organization is familiar with South Kingstown. And they also do have a subcontractor that qualifies as an MWBE enterprise. So it does add percentage points to our state-required seven and a half and seven and a half percent of minority and women business enterprise utilization. So with those differentiators, they scored slightly above their proposal cost. They were both pretty, pretty close. I'm going to zoom in on the screen here. Plan Review Services being at $25,240 and Four Leaf LLC being at $30,200. Both are under what we had budgeted in our total project budget. And again, being so close in cost, the building committee did make a recommendation to move forward with Four Leaf Inc. based on those few differentiators that moved them ahead in the qualifications.
All right. Thank you, Kate. Any questions on this one? All right, this is new business item 11A.
Motion to, motion to approve item 11A.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes.
And then the last item we had on our agenda was to request an appointment to the task, change order task force. And just as a reminder, that will be a group comprised of a member of town council, a member of building committee, deputy town manager, finance director, superintendent or principal, and the owner's project manager to review at different levels based on cost and scope of work, change orders that are presented by the construction management team, to assist in a thorough review, thorough discussion of change orders to either be authorized to proceed by that committee, or whether they need to be elevated to building committee or up to town council for their review and authorization.
All right. Thank you, Kate. All right. Any thoughts? Anyone have interest?
Yes, I'm interested. I started working with Phil in October of '21 when we had to start from scratch on this. I'd be happy to continue.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Maron to the committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Under discussion. Just reference the fact that this is 11B.
Under 11B.
Yeah.
All right. So we have, we are taking up new business item 11B. There's been a motion to appoint Mike Maron as the town council member to the task force, requiring a town council member. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Got anything else for us?
At this point, I have nothing else. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Before we go on, if the Brew 56 people, you, you can gracefully exit. You don't have to stay for our meeting. I know you're going to open tomorrow, and I'm thinking you have a lot of other stuff you want to take care of, so you can certainly stay. We're fascinating people, and the work of the town is amazing, but exit, stage left. Take care.
Good call, Deb.
Glad you noticed.
Break a leg, guys.
All right, Jim, we're going to continue on with the manager's report.
So as many people know, the town has been under a full water ban for several months now, and there isn't a day that goes by I don't get inundated with calls, requests. Landscapers call, companies are calling, they can't do their work, can't seed. People, residents, people at the gym come up to me and ask me this question. So it, I figured it'd be best to invite the representative from Viola here to answer these questions. His name is Chris Jacobs, and he's hearing the crowd. Also is Rich Bourbonay, who's our water czar. Right, Rich, is that where you are? But Rich, Rich has been involved in this.
Sorry, Rich.
Right from the beginning. But I, I know everyone has a lot of questions, and I invited Chris. He said he'd be happy to come and explain it. His explanation to me does make sense, but I want you to hear it. So, Chris, if you can come up, please.
Thanks for having me. I know there's a lot of questions like the town manager just mentioned, and so I just wanted to, happy to be here to answer any questions and also give you an update. Essentially, what we're looking at is, and prior to the nice rain that we had for the nor'easter, we were, if you look at, sorry, I'm having trouble connecting to that, to your screen, but anyways, if you look at U.S. drought monitor in New England, we're, you know, looking at our area, we're in a moderate, we were in a moderate drought prior to, or classification, prior to the, this weekend. And our aquifer levels, we're still not recharging very well. Tucker Town is still pretty close to where we have four wells. It's pretty close to historic lows still, as well as, well, we're getting good recharge or getting positive recharge from Howland, which has three more of our wells. Luckily, Howland is one of our bigger producers, so we are seeing some increase in that one, but we still, you know, I'm still concerned with the lack of recharge within Tucker Town. We plan on doing some where, we've been doing weekly level tests, and we have to shut down the wells to even get to get the proper level, what's called a static level. That way, it shows where the water's actually sitting. When the pump runs, it actually will draw it down and give you an artificial read. So we do have to shut the wells down, let it recharge, sit for a period of time before we can get a good static measurement. So we're, we're going to do that again this week, see where we stand. Hopefully, we've got some good recharge from this weather. Sometimes with heavier rains, though, a lot of it does end up in the storm drains out in the ocean and turns into runoff. So we like the slow, steady rains over a period of time. So we will see where we're at. But with the weather conditions, we, you know, and in the high demand over the summertime really drew down our aquifer levels, and we're just not seeing the recharge that we'd like to. So hopefully, we continue with some good wet weather over the fall. But if we do see a, a good positive recharge, we can pull back the, the restrictions. And if we do, I really hope and ask toward the citizens if we do go back to odd and even to give us some time and, and some relief for people to do that to, you know, the citizens of, and the customer base to really pay attention to that and not take it for granted because we are in a situation where we're just not getting a lack of, we're not getting the recharge that we normally get over the years, and it's, it's a lack of rain that we've had. Also to remind everybody, too, that we were in a winter drought coming into the summer. We had just got out of that when we hit, in June is when we, when we came out of that. We're back in a, a good area for aquifer, but we were starting out behind the eight ball moving into the summer. And this is, you know, a concern of ours, the change in the climate and the way the aquifers are recharging. I also want to let you know that Viola is actively looking at other sources and, you know, what we can do for future resiliency within our system. But fortunately, right now, and as mentioned previously when we're up here, and especially by Rich, you know, the most, most of that demand that we see over the summertime is irrigation. We have plenty of water for our, you know, essentials, the drinking, fire protection, and so on. So that's where we stand, you know. Right now, it is, you know, we're looking at, most of our complaints are for irrigation and wanting to, you know, turn their sprinklers back on and reseed and so on. But as far as necessities, we're in great shape. But I do just want to remind everybody that this is a precious resource that we have and not to take it for granted.
So, Chris, is there like an estimate in sight as to a potential way out of this?
So it's hard to estimate, you know, the, once again, you know, like, New England weathermen don't even get the, the weather right, so I, it's hard for me to predict how, you know, the weather's going to change. So what my job is to do is, is to monitor our aquifer levels and make sure that we're, you know, staying within where we need to be. And, you know, sometimes if I've got to be the bearer of bad news to, to let everybody know that, hey, we need some restrictions, then so be it. As far as the, what we're trying to do is, is get alternative sources, that, that could be a few years out. It's not, it doesn't take, takes quite a bit of time to locate an area, and we've already done a preliminary study. We have funding that we set aside to do a full extensive study on the areas. So we have a few areas in sight that we're looking at, and then, you know, those would be outside of our existing aquifer because that's crucial. We don't want to drill another hole within the exact same aquifer. You know, you're just pulling out of the same bucket essentially. And so there's, you know, the very small area that we are able to look at. So we will do end up doing a full study, and then when we do find an area, we work with, you know, whoever may own that section to be able to put in test wells and see the viability of it. So it does take time. It's a process. It's a process we've been looking at for a while. So, you know, we're also looking at the conservation and, you know, possible emergency interconnects with neighboring towns is another one that we're looking at. And that would be strictly emergency where it's not a supplemental. It's an, it's actual emergency. If one of our, you know, wellfields went down, something major happened, we'd be able to have another source. So these are all things that we have in progress. To put a definite timeline on it's very difficult, but, yeah.
Chris, thanks for coming out and speaking with us tonight. To echo Jim, you know, it's one of the things that most people are asking us about right now is when is the water ban over? It's good that we are doing fine on essential services. You've talked tonight about, you know, conserving water and having your customers use water less for irrigation. I think that's, you know, what you're saying, stop watering your lawn so much in the middle of July. Has Viola done any public services, you know, campaign for customers in South Kingstown or Narragansett that, you know, to inform them, you know, either by letter or by social media or video on what are the best practices and why are, why is there, you know, a water ban? Have, have you done any of that over the past three months since you started the drought?
So we do, we do, we, we, postcards we've sent out, it's conservation. Postcards were sent out to our customer base. We did that last year as well. That was one of our main, a campaign for education just before, trying to preemptive. We also have conservation kits. Our website talks about conservation, has drought monitoring on there and gives some tips as well. But, yeah.
So maybe just I would encourage you to maybe consider that for the company, and we're going to have more of these coming up in the upcoming years, right? So explaining to your customers, hey, you know, you need, this is why we're doing this might go a long way. So just to consider. Thank you, Chris.
So my original question began with how, who determines, which body determines the water ban? The town or Viola?
So it's, it's a joint between the three towns.
Okay.
We give the information, we share the information with the two towns. They're our wholesale customers. We let them know when we're, you know, coming into, when we're getting close to where we're going to need to do some restrictions, we talk it over and we put it out. Obviously, as us being the provider, this is going to be, you know, we're going to be the main driver of that, letting the two towns know where we stand. But I can't issue that without the towns.
And I was asked, who determines when it's lifted? What are the, what, what, what metrics are you looking for from a resident? Was like, very interested.
Yeah. So we have, like I said, we, we monitor our aquifer, and so we want to see where we're back into a, in a comfortable range and where we're, we're seeing a, a comfortable level within our aquifer, right? We're still in a, one of our wellfields is still in a, you know, at the near record lows. So we like to see recharge within that. That would let us know, and if we have good weather forecasts where we're, you know, we're getting some moisture and so on, we're seeing recharge, then they'll give us indication we can go back to, you know, lessen the restrictions.
And you may have said this, but maybe I glossed over it. The recharge comes from rain or is it from below?
It's, it's from rain, yeah.
It's only from rain? So it's going to, so it's going to rain another week, but it's going to be dry until like next weekend or Sunday, Monday, or something like that? So...
It has to percolate through the ground. So it's not like a reservoir where you're going to see immediate.
Yeah.
Recharge and effects from a rainfall. It does percolate through the ground. It has to do with stream flows. Stream flows build up. That can also percolate through the soil. It also matters north of us, right? So the aquifer is actually, it kind of flows, it recharges up to the north of us. It depends on how much they'd use as well. We also compete with the, the farmers, anybody who has wells, their own wells. So they're all pulling from this one water source, so...
And my final question is probably for Rich and not for you, but a resident asked me, why are the residential customers in a water ban? And they, this is what they say, and the banks continue to water. Banks get a bad rap, but why are businesses and banks...
Well, they shouldn't be.
Okay.
Irrigation is irrigation.
I agree.
So if we, if we see it, we, we attempt to stop that from happening. It doesn't, businesses aren't allowed to irrigate like any other residential property.
So...
Or any property.
Yeah. And are you still monitoring all the usage of the people in town?
Yeah, and it's greatly reduced. I mean, we're down to what our normal, our normal uses would be for this time of year when, when, you know, when, when people have left town, and also irrigation usually halts at this point.
Right.
So for us, we're, we're down to where we normally be, that 200,000 gallons per day range of what we normally see in the South Shore.
Last question.
But that isn't the aquifer. So the aquifer is...
I understand.
You know, so people are watering because it has been raining. My grass came back, you know, I don't irrigate, but it came back. Everybody's grass came back.
I don't irrigate, but my grass is fine. Great. So my last question is, in your opinion, are we about, should we quickly pivot to an odd-even water ban? Because this full ban is holding up people's lawns... lawns, growing lawns, you know, they're building houses and they can't put a lawn in. I mean, there, we won't meet for two more weeks. So do you likely to see it switching quickly?
Well, you know, that, and that, we generally look to, when we're, when we're talking about the aquifer, we're looking to Viola to make that type of decision. If we go to odd even, we'll make that decision over the near, near term because, you know, they've got to do some more.
I mean, residents are very, I don't know, people are hearing from people, but people text me and call me about the water.
Right. This, the situation as it is right now is not working for people in this community. And we hear from them all the time. And so we really need to impress upon the water company that we need to come up with a solution, whether it's the odd even. I mean, obviously, nobody is reseeding now or they're always trying to grow grass now. So that's, it's, we're going into fall or winter.
Yeah. And unfortunately, actually, now's a good time to actually seed.
Yeah, now is the time to seed.
Up until mid-November. So we're in that period, but, but you're still in a situation.
How many aquifers do we have?
Well, presently, you know, Chris can speak to it, but it's the mink aquifer is where, where Viola is pulling all of their water from. Yeah.
So if we, so the, the defunct wells that are not functioning in Green Hill, if we were to get those functioning, it would not matter because it's the same aquifer?
No.
Is that correct?
No, it is a different, it is a different source.
Okay.
So, you know, again, I think I talked about this a month ago, but we're going to study that and we're going to try to bring that, you know, see what it takes to bring that up to speed. That'll be a decision the council will have to make. There are a lot of costs involved in that. There's a lot going on with that. But if we start, and we've, we've been looking for money all along, as long as I've been the director, we've been searching for money on that.
So there's two aquifers in South Kingstown then?
Well, it's a, it's a different, the, the wells in, in the, in Green Hill are gravel packed wells. They're 50 feet deep. It's different. The aquifer and the mink is, is a different source. It's a, it's a much larger aquifer. So that's why they're able to pull.
Mink, M-I-N-K?
M-I-N-K, yes.
Meek brook.
Yeah.
I just can't hear clearly.
I'll throw this out to whoever wants to answer it, but given the fact that we've had 16 odd even restrictions in the last 20 years, I'm more concerned about what, what should we be doing now to start getting ready for next summer's ban? Is there a strategic, is there a long-term strategic plan?
Uh, well, I think we talked about it again a month ago. And in fact, the, the solicitor's office has already communicated with me and we've already started working toward an ordinance. That'll take a lot of internal work. It's going to involve the clerk's office. It's got to be formatted. Everything's got to be just right. And then it'll come here. And that will, most likely what we're looking at is a proposal to look at sort of that odd even all, you know, all summer long anyways. And that'll help alleviate a lot of the pressure on the well field. And that'll get us to a point where if we're studying the wells in Green Hill, you know, like Chris noted, you know, it takes, takes time to get those types of things going. So let's, let's at least implement. And I want to add that, that we, from, it's anecdotally, but it's, prior to us connecting to Viola, we still had water bans. So we're using much more water than we ever have in the South Shore. It, we would still need something in place to protect us from, you know, sucking air.
I mean, my really large concern with all of this is how are we going to have enough water for our new construction? How do we guarantee that we have water available for, you said, we have water for the necessities? Do we have water for another 300 homes or units? I mean, how do we, we need?
You want this one?
Yeah. Because what?
300 homes would equate to about, what is it, 30,000 gallons per day? You know, and we're talking in the millions. So 300 homes, if, if people are using it for human concern, potable water is drinkable. That's the definition of potable water. And that's what we're obligated to provide. You know, if we're taking that water and we're not conserving it, then, then we're going to have problems. But, but generally speaking, to add homes is not necessarily the whole draw. Like I'm saying, in, in South Shore now, there's still people that, that aren't gone and they're here and we're using 200,000 gallons a day. So we were using 1.5 million in July on Sundays. So there's, there's a conservation issue here that we need to address.
Can we cut?
In addition to sources, by the way, I'm not saying.
So I, I think, I think what Patty's speaking to is many people comment on social media that we have a water ban. So how can we keep building and building and building? That's what I see when I, and so people don't understand, right? A regular little old home doesn't use the thousands of gallons that you reported in July were being used. I don't know, 500, half a million gallons a day in July were being used as opposed to in March, which was 142, 142. So it's like four times, three times the usage.
I, I think what we got to understand too is that we, you have to look at conservation. All right. The houses and the day, and the necessity needs is not what's driving the water demand.
Correct.
Right? It, it's a lot of the irrigation. So when we look at, there may be a need to be a change of culture that needs to be addressed as far as what you're planting. And this is kind of what we've been trying to drive is, you know, turf yards use a lot of water. They need a lot of water to, to stay green and so on. That's, that's an aesthetic, right? We're talking about the most precious resource in the universe. When anybody looks at a livable planet, what is the first thing they want to look at is it to have water, right? And we're looking to, to dump this water on the ground on a daily basis just for plants, right? The, you have a transient population that comes in during the summertime, that comes in that, you know, it's a great location to come to and visit. And we want to be able to keep that here. But we need to really look at, you know, is there better ways to keep the aesthetics? Is there better plants to get, is there better plantings we can do? Is there better ways we can conserve this water? We conserve, we look at conserving energy and all other types of resources. You know, we need to also consider the water. Now, we have plenty enough to, to be able to sustain the building and so on. But we also got to look at is, are we going to overdevelop our water system to handle, you know, your extreme summer demands for three months? You know, do we need to build more tanks out there and then you end up having problems for the rest of the nine months with water age and so on? There's a lot to it than just being able to, you know, increase pipe size, increase, you know, tanks, find new sources. We, we need to work together, you know, to, to come up with a better solution on, on how we do this. The odd and even, when we, when we issued those odd and even restrictions this year, nobody paid attention to them. There was no decrease in demand that we saw. So, you know, if we do get in a culture where we do have an ordinance and this is known, hey, we need to protect this resource. Everybody can share it if we do it responsibly. If we have odd and evens and everybody actually pays attention to, we may not have been in this situation that we're currently in now, right? Where everybody just used it, nobody paid attention to those odd and even restrictions. And then we ended up having, you know, no rain and we came into where we ended up having a full water ban. So I'd really like to see, you know, not only are we going to look for resiliency, you know, we have the availability to keep development, but we need to do it in a, in a, in a conscious manner, right?
Maybe we could look at something with the planning, planning board to suggest drought resistant landscaping and make that sort of something that we look for when we're developing new houses. And also for those people that are using half a million gallons, there needs to be a way that you shut off their water. I mean, we, we can't allow one or two people to wantonly consume like that.
And, and you're absolutely correct. But the way we're structured now is we have no real mechanism to, to protect the source. So by instituting perhaps, you know, I'm, it's just a suggestion, but if we institute an ordinance, we may be able to build in some of those safeguards so that we can say, listen, enough's enough. And I think just to, to cap that discussion about a potential ordinance, my goal has been to, for the first meeting of December, to have something, you know, and then you can either put it down for, you know, whatever, review by the planning board, whatever you want to do and put it down for a public hearing. But hopefully the first week of, the first meeting in December, I'll have something ready to go following a, a lot of internal review. That's my goal.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay.
Do we, when we send the water bills out, can you, is there, I recently got mine, that's why I've seen it. Is there a way to add additional information or any, anything? It's just really like send the bills, here's the bill, send your payment, it's due on this day. Is there a way to?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we could, you know, we do have a, you know, see, I don't know that our, our website is as robust in the direction of conservation as it could be. So perhaps let me, let me look at that and, and then we'll talk. You know, my staff is real savvy about putting together, making the website just right. So we can, we can try to do something along those lines. And then maybe it's just a matter of making mention of it at the next, in the next water bill. Listen, summer's coming, start conserving.
I mean, some of it's people don't know how to conserve. And I'm just looking on your website and there's some very fundamental things you can do easy. But me turning the water off when I brush my teeth is going to save some gallons, but it's the person three houses down who's watering at 3 o'clock in the morning during the ban. That's the problem. And that's, we don't want neighbor to turn into the neighbor police. So that's not a fun situation for anyone to live in. So I would think that some sort of ordinance would be helpful to, to sort of increase one education and awareness and maybe change behaviors. But I think, and then that's the short term. And the long term is probably identifying a new aquifer, poll.
Chris, I got a few questions. I just want to run by you here.
Absolutely.
We talked that, you've seen a decline in the usage, you know, over time here, just, you know, naturally, the change in season here. People sort of leave town or here for the summer, less water being used to water the plants, grass, et cetera. But you did say, you know, we're not seeing the recharge in the aquifer that we would like to get away from the water ban. Now, I know that there's certain parties in town who are not subject to water bans or odd even bans that are issued by the water authority. For example, the farms, URI, which are, you know, state designated farms, that's, those are the parties that are really using up a lot of this water, not allowing the water, aquifers to recharge. Is that correct? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Uh, that does impact it quite a bit. I don't know exact numbers because they don't have to report that. But as well as turf farms and so on, you use it quite a bit of, of water. And we're competing for those resources. Yeah. Well, they're up above it, yeah. So they're pumping from the ground. They're not directly into Meek Brook. And I, I'm, I'm going to share, I wish I could share with you how the Meek Brook works.
Kenny Burke is in the back, water board guy.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Right? That's not, they're not pumping from the ground.
Yeah. So no effect?
Yeah.
Those farms have no effect on the water recharge of the water aquifers? Is that correct?
Well, which ones, you could speak to if you know more, yeah, about it. Absolutely.
Sorry, Kenny.
Yeah. I'm sorry, just. Just for clarification, some of the Peckham Farm wells, there's actually an irrigation pond. So there was a NRCS grant like a couple decades ago through Mike Sullivan. So they knew about the lag from drawing directly from the Chapuxa aquifer. So they built an irrigation pond. The irrigation that used to happen out there was actually directly out of the pond so that you wouldn't have that direct impact to the rest of the aquifers and, and bother all the, you know, the other competing uses. So just for clarification. And we, we terminated the lease with the turf farmers. We have research growth out there. So it's not cultivated anymore. Forgive me. Sorry.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
All right. So the lack of recharge is really not associated with use by parties who are not subject to water ban or odd even bans. It's really just a lack of rain?
Most of it is, yeah. Yeah.
And you said that when it rains heavily like it did the last two days, a lot of that rain sort of runs off into, I guess, the ocean, salt pond, things like that?
Yeah.
Are there any, I mean, infrastructure investments that towns have done to be able to retain the water and not have it, you know, just run off?
Aside from building a reservoir, there's not, there's not much else we could do. I mean, you guys tried to capture a lot of that runoff on, down Main Street with the, with the drainage systems. But, you know, you're not going to, you know, short of, short of reservoir. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
I just, you're just not giving us any concrete date of like when this is going to end. And it's very puzzling to people. Even though it hasn't rained, I understand that, it hasn't been super hot. So I can't imagine that the demand is continuing the way it was in July.
Well, yeah. And that's what worries me is the fact that our demand is drawn down, but our aquifer is not recharging, right? And that's lack of rain. We're not getting the recharge. Normally, in a normal condition, we'd see the demand go down and we'd see our aquifers start to climb, right? I don't have concrete data because there is no concrete data to provide you. I don't know when it's going to rain enough for that to come up.
Correct.
We, we are monitoring it. And like I said, hopefully we see, you know, later on this week when we, we do it again, we'll see some recharge from the nor'easter. But once again, you know, we, I'll talk with the towns. And if we want to bring it back to, to odd evens, you know, we'll, we'll try and put out a really strong message that, hey, because, because my biggest fear since it is, you know, time to reseed and do all this stuff is all of a sudden, everybody, the demand goes up again. Not, not to summer levels, but, you know, and, and we're, we're trying, we're seeing diminishing returns in our aquifer. So.
I just don't think if we drove around through the neighborhoods that people would actually still think we're in a water ban. So I think demand has come to some equilibrium because people don't think it's still happening, even though it hasn't been lifted by you.
Right.
So.
I still get a lot of calls where, hey, can I seed? Can I seed? And I, I understand that. But, you know, what we're getting into is, do I lift the water ban and give everybody permission to go ahead and seed when we're not getting a recharge in our aquifer that we're seeing? So we're going to, we're going to raise the demand. We can, you know, we're going to see it maybe come up another million gallons a day. If we could space it out, I'd be willing to, you know, see and based off of what we see after this last measurement to, you know, if we need to back it down. But, you know, my point of view is normally when we see the demand go down, we see the aquifer start to recharge because we're not pulling as hard. But we're not seeing that.
I, I think that comment, nothing against you and the way you said it. I think that comment summarizes the problem. There is no normal anymore.
Right.
Aquifers are not, you mentioned it several times, the aquifers are not recharging the way you would normally expect. They're, I'm not a scientist. I've talked to one. They're not going to recharge the way they used to. The change in the climate and the intensity of the precipitation we get, unlike the last few days you mentioned, when it comes down all at once, several inches in an hour or a day.
Right.
It winds up in the runoff and the land doesn't have time to absorb it. In addition to that, with the warmer weather, with climate change, the soil is essentially getting baked. And baked soil doesn't absorb as well either.
Yeah.
That doesn't give the aquifers a chance to recharge.
Yeah.
Normal's gone.
Yeah. And I agree. Yeah. So, you know, we are looking at how this impacts us, but this is, this is a broader study than, that we can do. And so I've been in talks with the Water Resources Board and, you know, we communicate. But, you know, it is a, it is an issue and we take it very seriously. So, but, you know, this is why we need to really drive home the conservation right now until, you know, we, we figure it out. If we figure it out.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
We'll figure it out.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks.
All right. We're going to continue on with the manager's report.
Before, just quick, this is for neither one of you. So a resident asked, are they going to start issuing burn permits? I know the chief is here. I don't know. Is... I know the chief is here, I don't know, is, people are asking, because it's been so dry, obviously, there's no burn permits, but someone's looking to burn. It's after October 1, and they can start at 5, but I don't know if you're issuing them. That's the other related question to this.
Well, I think the unified district issues those, but.
You call the police department.
Yeah, if we want to discuss that, we've got to add that to the agenda.
It's related to the water ban.
That is not broad enough to encompass this.
It is. Okay, so anything during the town manager's report can be brought up, so I know you're a little new, but I just ask that question to the town manager.
If you want to talk about the fire burn, fire ban or not, just add it to the agenda.
Anything can be covered by the town manager, so my request is to the town manager.
Something that's not on the agenda must be added if it's going to be discussed.
Or can be talked about, I can ask a question of the town staff.
Mike, you want to comment on that? Legal counsel, give an opinion?
I don't know if Jim can even answer the question.
He can't, he says he can't answer the question.
But the chief, chief got up to answer the question, we're wasting more time, take two seconds. Is a resident able to have a burn permit?
So, I have been counseling Jim on his manager's reports, the reason you've got A through F tonight is that I've been very uncomfortable with a free-for-all, so that's why we're setting this up by topic. You can easily ask the question, just please add the issue to the agenda, and then the chief can answer, and then I'll, then I won't get you in trouble with the Open Meetings
Unless there's a motion entertaining adding that, we're going to move on to the next item.
I'd like to make a motion to have my question answered by the chief.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to add a question regarding fire burning permits to the agenda. There's been a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes, chief coming up.
Good evening, so, we do issue burn permits on a typical, but during the water ban, we haven't been in coordinate, haven't been issuing the permits, and that's in coordination with the fire districts, that to not have water available or hose available in the event, you know, if you did have a burn permit that did get out of control.
Okay, so the resident asked me, so there are no burn permits to be issued?
No permits have been issued during the ban.
So when it goes to the odd even, will they be able, or is it going to be related to the odd even of their home?
It would be related to the odd even.
Perfect.
We'd just coordinate the same.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, we're going to continue on with the manager's report.
Next item is, you'll find a memo in front of you, dated October 6. I'm just, I'm giving it to you tonight to look at it, review it, and then we'll have a future discussion on it, basically, but for full transparency, we figured we'd talk about it tonight. We're at the point where the affordable housing projects that we're looking at need some direction on exactly what the council would like moving forward, and we'll have that discussion on a future date, but I wanted to give you the memo tonight to look at, absorb it, and then we can discuss it on an agenda. So really, there's three, three town properties we're talking about, and I'll list them in order that I think the council would want to address. First would be South Road School, Oliver Watson House, and then the Wakeville Elementary School. So this memo gives the options, it was prepared by Luke Murray, it's very thorough, and it will, if you'd like to entertain knocking down, demolishing the South Road School, that's a possibility with funds that we have, and it's listed on the back where they could come from, we have the money to do that. The Oliver Watson House, would, the question would be, so if we knock down the South Road School and just leave it, it's been there since '07, vacant, you knock it down, it makes it more attractive to get grant money to, for infrastructure improvements, because that is a major hurdle, just having it sit there. Trying to ask for money to knock it down, demolish it, abate it, and then go for the grant money, which is what Secretary Goddard of the state recommended, that we make the land more attractive to get grant money. That'd be one option I would ask the council for direction on at a future date. Second option, let's go to the Oliver Watson House. Do you want to keep the parcel as is, or do you want to subdivide it and sell the house off only, and then use the proceeds for more, for affordable housing at that location? So that would be a consideration, subdivide it or leave it. That's something I'd like to get some direction on by the council. The third option, the third project would be the Wakeville Elementary School. It's a little premature, and that's why I decided not to put this on the agenda. Like, where do we want to go with this? Do you want to lead the school up and research the possibility of lots, space to rent out, or leave it vacant, do you want to knock it down, and then decide from there? The one thing I will say is, we're getting vandalism, a lot of vandalism at the Wakeville Elementary School. There's nearly 50 windows have been broken. Police Department has assigned detectives to monitor this. We've had water damage, water left on. So before it becomes a major blight, we've had, also, we've had graffiti on it, where do we want to go with that school? Now, so, once again, the memo's in front of you, can look at it, we can add it to the agenda at some point in the future, but we are at that point where the staff needs direction, where would you like us to go with those three properties? That's item C. Item D is the Town Council Agenda Revisions, and I'll be quick on this. I brought this to the Town Council a couple of meetings ago, and, so that we could, we can make a decision on improving the efficiency of the meeting. I think by, and Nicole, if you could pull that up, please. So, there's three words I would use on this revision that I'd like to keep in mind, flexibility, efficiency, and transparency. And I'll explain each. We do a really good job with those three, but this even makes us more flexible. Look at the agenda this evening. So normally, we would had to have started an executive session at 6:30, or 6:00 or 6:30 before the meeting, or at the end of the meeting, which we run pretty much to 11 most meetings. So 6:00 or 6:30 is when we would have an executive session, because we were required to have a work session in the rules for the agenda. But we changed that, the council changed that and voted to give more flexibility, so we did not have to have a work session. And the reason we had to have a work session was because for the interviews, so the council approved, we can move the interviews to the body of the meeting, and we could then do away with the work session if we had nothing to put on it, so there's no wasted time. So like tonight, 7:00 PM, we started with a executive session, then we went right to the meeting at 7:30, gave us great flexibility. We're looking for more flexibility. And I'll get into that. It improves efficiency, it's a town, even though it's a Town Council meeting, the business of the town needs to get done in an efficient, quick, decisive manner. And because sometimes there's so many things on this agenda, that we go right to the end, and we just approve things, it doesn't happen often, but I think that the town business, the new business items, really need to be addressed as quickly as possible. Another item on here would be, I talked about transparency. One of the questions that's come up by residents is that the lack of public comments regarding new business items is something that residents were looking for. So if you, we would still have two public comment sections, each one would be five minutes, but if you look at item, I think it's 10, is that right, 10? So if you look at item 10, the public comments would be before new business, so it would be limited to new business. So that'd be a very quick public comment section. I believe it would improve the timing of the meeting, and it would move things forward. So if a member of the, a resident, anyone, could get up and talk about any new business item prior to the council voting on it, once again, improves transparency, in my opinion.
Just to clarify, you mean five minutes per person?
Yes, yes, five minutes per person, same as before. The, let's, let's back up to consent agenda. The last time the consent agenda was, it was set at $10,000, was about 2013, it was about 12 years ago when that number was used. And that would require, council member Maron brought it to my attention, because I forgot about it, that it would require action by the council in an ordinance, so we would have to have a public hearing. Talking to Mike Rosillo, who's a solicitor in many other communities, the number that most communities are using for consent agenda is either 20 or $25,000. Now, flexibility comes back into play here. If we do a consent agenda so that many of these items, Public Services is buying salt, DPW's buying certain items, brine, or whatever, if it's over the $10,000 threshold, does the council really need to weigh in on these contracts that we do year in and year out? So we would increase it to hopefully 25,000, consent agenda, and then the council could see the consent agenda and can pull any one of those off if there's a question with it, and put it on as a new business item. So that's the flexibility part that I'm talking about. So the question I have for the council is this, I'm requesting your permission to, to try it. Let's try this new format once or twice, and see if it works, as I think it might work, where we could get the business of the town done within an hour to an hour and a half, and then we could move forward for the discussion items, which would be the last thing. The Town Council brings up many discussion items. Your constituents are constantly calling you, I know that, because I see the emails and I get the requests. There needs to be a section on this agenda, instead of the Town Manager's Report being like a dumping ground for everything, we don't know where to fit it in, you could have Town Council discussion items. So any member of the council can request either to have it on new business, if you want action, a vote, or if you'd like to just discuss it, to put it out there. And that would be the only thing that's really changed, where you have a new section, Town Council Discussion Items. So once again, the request would be for the council to authorize me to change this for one or two meetings, try it, and see how it works. That's the ask.
All right, thank you, Jim. Any thoughts? I'm open to it.
I would like to give it a try and, and see, see how we like it, I mean, there's no harm in trying, because I, I think we, we definitely could improve the flow of the meetings and be more efficient, and we need to discuss the, and make decisions about, you know, the town's business first, and not get overly distracted by our discussions, which I love, but I think probably we need to be more focused.
I'm in favor of these changes, we can definitely try them, I think that these five counselors up here want to get the, the business of the town done as effectively as possible, and sometimes we haven't been able to do that before 11 o'clock, so. And are we still talking about the previous item as well, the school, the properties?
No, I was thinking of this one.
No problem, so that's, those are my thoughts, I'm in favor of these changes.
Just to express my thoughts, I'm open to it, I mean, this isn't the first time we've modified the agenda to try to be more efficient, so it's always a work in progress. We could try this, I'm sure there may be tweaks, if we don't like how it goes, perhaps moving things around, you know, maybe we like Town Council Discussion Items further ahead of others, but I'm open to trying this out, see where it goes, see how the flow is, and go from there. One question I have as to the consent agenda items, Mike, with respect to anything 25,000 or less, for now, that would have to continue to be on the agenda until we have a public hearing to change that.
Right, I could work on an ordinance, obviously, after this evening, and we can begin that process. I think that one's a no-brainer, at 10,000, it's just too, and, and by the way, you'd still have to approve it, and if you wanted to take it off, as Jim said, you could take it off the consent agenda, so it's not as if you're not approving it, it's just the way you're approving it.
So I have a question about Town Council, we can do the ordinance, it's fine, Town Council Discussion Items, how is that different from when we email you, like, who would decide that? Like, because I have a thing about the, for example, tonight, about the school funding formula and including transportation in the funding formula, and sending that to the General Assembly. That requires action.
Yeah, so you were very clear when you emailed, when you emailed me, you seemed very clear, I was liking our new business, requires action or a vote or whatever, some are not, not that they're not clear, it's like, we put it under new business, because that's the easiest place to put it, but like, if there's an update or a discussion item on something else that's not requiring action, we could put it at the end, and I would, I would ask the council, I would, is it okay to put it under discussion items, do you want it somewhere else? But it would save much of the discussion towards the end of the meeting, rather than the beginning of the meeting, which I, I believe slows us down, slows us down from getting the business done. So, once again, I think if we try it, it could work, or not, so, that's my feeling.
The only problem with what you just expressed there is you can essentially circumvent having something on Town Council Discussion Items by simply saying, I'd like to discuss this, and have potential vote by the council regarding XYZ. By asking that, it would no longer be on Town Council Discussion Items.
Right.
Because it's requesting potential action.
I would ask, I would ask the council member, please clarify, would you like to just discuss this, or are you looking for action by the council?
I just don't think anyone would ever choose that, they would want to know if their colleagues want to go forward in direction A or B, or no action at all.
Well, I think the discussion item you brought up with the fund balances and stuff, you weren't looking for action, you were just making us aware of it. So that would be a good example of, like, that was, that was a good discussion, took a lot of time, but it was a good discussion at the beginning of the, you know, in the Town Manager Report, that'd be an excellent example of, you want to have the discussion, it's not going to come up till budget season, put it there, and we can just discuss it there. In my mind, it's pretty clear cut where it would go.
So, just to give some perspective, someone says, oh, Jim, can you talk about this and add it to the manager's report? That would be something where, instead of the manager's report, you'd add it, Town Council Discussion Items.
Yes. And, and probably less than half of the Town Council members that put stuff on the agenda, and you all do, are requesting action. You want to discuss a topic, like, if you want to discuss the water ban, all right, that's something that, you know, although the manager's report is an appropriate place, because I asked them to come, but if you want to discuss something that's not requiring a vote, just want to bring it to the attention of the residents, that's the place to put it.
All right, let's try it, let's see how it goes.
Okay, thank you. What was that?
So I have one question about the public comment, because I think that is a little bit stifling, because if you want, you can only talk about new business items. So, because many times, we don't have 30 minutes of conversation from residents, sometimes we do, but sometimes we don't. So, do we have the flexibility, say, looks like people might speak tonight, but at another time, if there was no one who wanted to speak about new business, do we have the flexibility to say this 30 minutes will be public comment, because it's already 9:00, and if we were under this format?
We always have that flexibility.
Correct, I'm mostly saying it out loud so that we all agree that if, if no one wants to talk about new business in two weeks, we don't just say, moving on, we say, okay, we'll do 30 minutes of public comment, because there could be someone who wants to talk about something, they took time out of their day to come here, and we're going to say, you have to wait another 90 minutes, or whatever.
So I, I can address why, I did some research into other agendas in other towns, and some have like a public comment after each new business item. Does anyone in the public have anything to say? And they can come up slower, but they still do it that way. Now, I believe if we have the public comment for new business items, we could expedite getting to the second public comment, which is unlimited. So if you're, if you're asking the residents, does anyone have any comments on any new business items, and they say no, you're getting to new business quicker, half hour quicker, and now you're leaving more time for the second public comment. Of course, though, you're the council, and you could change the rule as, right then and there, if someone, if something's pressing, or you feel that should be addressed earlier, it's up to you. I think it would get us to the end game quicker.
Well, I say we try it, if we're not happy with the results, we modify.
Do we need a vote on that, Mike Rosillo?
No, because you're not changing the rules yet, you're going through an experiment first, and then when you're ready, I'll go ahead with the ordinance, but as to these other rule changes, let's wait and see if you're happy with it, and if so, we'll change the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is an update by Ken Burke, who's the Chair of the South Kingston, USA 250th Ad Hoc Committee. Ad-Hoc Committee.
Thank you, Town Manager. Just here to give you a quick update, I did give a hard copy of this also for your council packages. Approximately six months ago, the council formed this South Kingston USA 250th Planning Committee. We modeled it based after the town's very successful 300th Town Celebration Committee. We have been meeting just about every other week since early this past winter, with the exception of the last month and a half, we've been reverting to monthly meetings because we're now going into implementation mode. I wanted to very briefly touch on some of the events that we came up with that reflect the earlier presented pro forma budget and series of events that we had presented to the council. The first event that will take place is actually just a little bit over a month, excuse me, a week. This is the Liberty Tree Planting. Ms. Sharon Henderson is here, she's the Chair of that work group. This is a program that's sponsored through the Rhode Island Secretary of State's Office for any municipality in Rhode Island that wants to participate. There'll be a wonderful planting here at Town Hall, again, on October 24th. The next event that we've worked on is a follow-up of the speaker series that we had through the 300th. That's managed by John and Karen Desmond. They've got over a dozen individual speakers. We split our presentations between the Kingston Free Library, which is one of the state's original state houses, and the Contemporary Theater, as well as the high school. In February, this will be the first large community event. We're following up on a successful bonfire that we hosted for the 300th at the Sagatucket Park. We're hosting what we're calling the Sagatucket Skirmish. So this is a live, authentic colonial encampment and skirmish that will happen in Sagatucket Park. We're working with six different militias, we're looking, working with several colonial reenactors, we've got two horse-drawn carriages, we're working through the, with the Riverside Cemetery, to have a group called Ladies of the Green. They are colonial reenactors, they will be talking with families that choose to go on these carriage rides to learn a little bit about Rhode Island, and specifically, South Kingston's role in the Revolutionary War. The, the event will culminate with an actual skirmish, a battle where the colonists do flush out the British, live with muskets and cannon fire, and I don't know if the Fire Chief is here, but they did endorse this event. It'll be a wonderful event, I promise. We are also co-joining the VFW. Bill Boardman is the Chair of our Military History Recognition Group, and they are working on several different touchpoints to bring a special awareness to the Revolutionary War heroes, those that are known and are memorialized at the Hazard School, and those that are not, the Black and Indigenous populations that fought valiantly in the Revolutionary War from the town of South Kingston. We also have with us tonight Mr. Mark Phillips. Mark is working with Terry Murphy in the Rec Department. We are going to supersize the already amazing Fourth of July celebration at Old Mountain Field. We're very hopeful with the groundbreaking for the new facility at Old Mountain Field, that this area will be readily available for our supersized Fourth of July event. And lastly, Mr. Russ Donato is here. Russ is pioneering or championing the Town Beach Party. This is a follow-on from a couple of events, one of them being the Harvest Moon Festival that we held for the 300th. We've been warned that we can't have a bonfire this time, although that was really, really cool, but I understand the concern there. But we are going to have a wonderful, family-filled event towards the end of September, and again, it's a follow-on of the Town Beach Series that Councilman Wedgemont had also advocated for earlier this year. So all of these events, again, are funded through the town. We did have a couple of successful grant applications sent out, one of them to the Rhode Island 250th Commission, another one, we did have some feedback with the local representatives. So we do expect to have an income of cash that comes and should get spread out of, over all of the programs. We also are going to be putting forth a letter-writing campaign. We've got the letter set up, and we've carved out responsibilities amongst our work groups with the publicity that will be coming out of the Town Recreation Department. A big shout-out to Chloe Lamfair. We're going to start a social media campaign in about another three weeks to drum up awareness for South Kingston's unique role in the Revolutionary, Revolutionary War, and we expect great turnout. So, just wanted to give you that quick update, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Ken, you might want to stay up for this last item, so this, this might pertain to you. So the last item, Councilmember Wedgemont had sent a detailed report requesting, it's called the South Kingston Access Path Initiative, and Experimenter South Kingston Access Path for Everyone Escape, and he was regarding a possible bike path, study of a bike path from like the Marina Park all the way down to the beach, and he was requesting an update on that. So, the council directed it to BPAC to look at, evaluate, see where we're going from here, what do we need to do, and so, it's really, so, Ken, I hate to put you on the spot, but I know it got referred to you guys...
Dorothy's the Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it got referred to you, I'm sorry.
He's a member, but she's the Chair.
And I just wanted to say, just for clarification, that I wasn't, I didn't propose a, one straight bike path from town all the way to the beach would be similar to how our bike path works on the O'Neill Bike Path, right? You have a combination of small roads, bike path, and, you know, bike dedicated lanes. So, thank you for coming tonight, Dorothy.
Sure. I did send out a communication on what BPAC has done so far, and we did reach out to the Office of Administration, the Division of Planning, they're working on their long-range transportation plan. And so, as it regards to Bike Mobility Plan for the state, there are some possibilities of federal, of funding from the state. There's already indications that there's possible bike lane, or some kind of bike infrastructure that could be part of the Bike Mobility Plan. Unfortunately, we don't have funding through the state for that plan yet, but I know that Representative Tanzi is working on that, so something that we can continue to support. But the long-range planner, Liza Farr, has suggested that we keep an eye on whatever the state is doing, what Rideod is doing, as far as any of the road, connecting roadways from Main Street to Mattoonick, and when there's an opportunity, when they're doing a repaving, that we try to latch on to that and ask for either a bike lane or a dedicate, dedicated space path.
Thanks, Dorothy, and thanks for all the work that you and Kenny and everybody else does on our BPAC, which is so critical for bridging our town into the 21st century and, you know, mitigating a lot of the car-on pedestrian or bicycle accidents that we're really trying to avoid as much as possible. Well, if you can just keep the council up to date in the Town Manager's Office, up to date, that would be great. This is the sort of thing that won't come in the next few years, but if we want to try to make some change, you have to put the plans forward and try your best to see when it's possible that the stars can align on this. So, just know that I'm still interested in it, anything I can do to help support. I saw the letters, and if Representative Tanzi and the rest of our fine South Kingston delegation need some letters of support, please let us know, and thank you so much for being a great steward of our committee.
Thank you, and I just also want to mention that if there's anybody in the public that would be interested in coming to BPAC meetings and giving us a hand, or joining, we can have up to nine members, we have five, so we can add four people.
Well, there's perhaps some bicyclists in the, in the audience that may want to submit their name, so...
All right, thank you, Dorothy.
And, Mr. President, could I just say to Jim and Luke and the rest of our town staff that was working overtime all weekend on the nor'easter, thank you. It does not go unnoticed how much work you put into this, and I know I'm new here, so I got a tour from Rich Bourbonay the other day, and, and of the wastewater facility, so I just want to thank you personally, Rich, for that tour.
Just a point and note on that, so in a time of emergency in this town, roles change, and the Chief of Police is also the EMA Director, Emergency Management Director, so he's really the one that drove all the work this weekend, he worked tirelessly on it, and then I would be like the Director of Public Safety if we needed that, you know, as a, if we did have a hurricane or some severe damage. So, we did works on it a bit, but the Chief and his Police Department were the ones that really drove it this weekend, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Jim. All right, we're not going to move to public comments. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on any matter, invite a come on up. We just ask that you introduce yourself, we're going to limit it to five minutes. When you begin speaking, this clock will begin counting down, you can use it as a way to gauge the five minutes. Also, we're going to limit this segment to 30 minutes, after which we're going to move to a public hearing, New Business, we're going to try to move through those rather fast, and if you hadn't had an opportunity to speak, there's going to be another public comments segment after New Business. With that said, Dorothy?
Hi, I just wanted to use, I had planned to come anyway, before I'd heard that we were going to be asked about the escape plan, and I just wanted to alert the, the Town Council, give you guys a heads up that BPAC is working on recommendations for the capital improvement plan, and we will be getting those recommendations to you. As you know, you recently approved the pavement management program for the town, for, for Rich, to, and they're going to be looking at the pavement, but what they are not going to be looking at, and what the scope of the project does not include, is to review, affirm, advise, you know, how to make town roads safer. It's not going to be evaluating the condition of the sidewalks, or resolve any longstanding safety issues on the roads. So we are going to be asking that the Town Council help provide a fund so that our DPS can use that money to, to get contractors, consultants, engineering firms to help us build criteria viability for traffic calming measures. And so, we have a couple of other requests for you, but I just wanted you to know that that was coming down the pipe.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Ramsey, year-round resident, taxpayer, registered voter. Something is very wrong. Fact: Water is a finite and precious resource. Fact: For 16 of the last 20 years, we have seen water restrictions and/or total outdoor water bans. Fact: This year, we've had a complete outdoor water ban since mid-August, and we are the only community to have one. Something is wrong. This isn't a new occurrence, yet the only person in the front of the room that I heard even acknowledge that there may be a problem was the Vice President of the Town Council, Mike Maron. At the September 8th meeting, he asked Richard Bourbonay to begin to look into possible options for future water resources, saying that things wouldn't improve with climate change. Before we reach crisis, I think we're there. From Rhode Island Water 2030, a report by the Rhode Island Vision of Planning. Southern Rhode Island is groundwater-dependent and lacks storage capacity. Therefore, water is not always available when and where needed. Storage capacity must be increased in order to provide long-term supply reliability. The trend of sprawling development, as identified in Land Use 2025, is detrimental to the long-term sustainable future of water supply for the state. From Land Use 2025 Policies, it states the importance to link land planning with water use planning to encourage new growth in appropriate locations that preserves a clean and adequate water supply. Something is wrong. Veolia is an international company. They are running a huge business. They don't care about you and me. Our infrastructure is inadequate. If they could meet half the demands of their customers, we would have alternate watering days. They cannot do that. Again, we are the only water community. Does the Town Council care about you and me? Every time they approve a building, every time they add a toilet, a shower, a dishwasher, a washing machine, it's impacting an already inadequate system. As stated above, we have inadequate storage. The Veolia representative said at the September 8th meeting that they can't push enough water through the pipes to refill the tanks that emptied during the day, so it sounds as though we need more storage tanks. Over 100 apartments are going up in the Commons, 23 multi-unit buildings are in the works for Champagne Heights. I just saw a notice of a public hearing regarding the plan to review the Sagatucket Farm's major subdivision. We all see the building going on in town, and of course, there are the Watson House, the South Road School, and Wakefield School sites that haven't yet been fleshed out. Something is wrong. We are the only water system in the state that seems to have this problem, and as you know, it is in all of South Kingston. Kingston doesn't have the problem. This year, there is a total outdoor water ban. In the near future, it may be odd-even shower or laundry days. We are the only ones. Something is very wrong.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I just, I wanted to just give you the memo that Rich Bourbonay's gave us so that you can have that, but I don't think that we're the only community that had a water ban. I think that North Kingston has it baked into their ordinance.
They have a solution, we don't.
This is not a back and forth, this is sort of just, if you want to take it offline after the meeting, we can certainly do that.
I just want to give it to you.
Hello, Chris Slatney, Duck Rab, longtime listener, first-time caller. I'm here actually to talk about a new business item. I'm here to support the last item of New Business, which is repealing the ordinance that prohibits the use of the South County Bike Path from dusk to dawn. So I prefer to bike around town. I have commuted for 15 years in town, primarily on my bike, primarily on the bike path, often at night. This has never been a concern for me, because I didn't think it was being enforced. That was until I saw a Town Council meeting this August where I learned that not only it was being enforced, it was being defended by the police with the council seemingly in agreement. So, now I'm concerned, because I think that defense kind of missed the point that Joshua Port made, and the point that I'm going to reiterate right now, which is that the bike path is not just used for recreation, a lot of people use it for transportation as well. You know, people that may not own a car, or people who just prefer to walk or drive, I mean, walk or bike instead of drive. It is unquestionably the safest routes to get between a lot of different places in town, certainly safer than trying to share the road with any motor vehicles while riding a bike. That's true day or night. So I used to work in West Kingston, I would bike the bike path every day. If I were to follow this ordinance that's there right now, I would be forced to take 138 and 108 home instead of the bike path. These are roads, the town's own, safe streets for all, report identified as critical and high-risk respectively for serious injury and death to vulnerable road users. Those are pedestrians and cyclists. I'll say that again, this ordinance effectively is taking people who are biking at night that could use the bike path and forcing them into the road... that could use the bike path and forcing them into the road that the town has identified as critical or high risk of injury or death to them. It's beyond me how I can see Deputy Chief Bugo up here claiming that his foremost concern was public safety while defending such an ordinance. So I'll also say, I know that when he discussed this, that liability for the town will probably come up as an issue with regards to lights or like illuminated signs or something like that. So I just want to say that I don't think any of that is necessary. I think it would be welcome. But I don't think it should be a prerequisite to repealing this ordinance. I'm not a lawyer, but the liability here is that you're forcing people, again, off of the safest alternative against their better judgment into rows that the town acknowledges are critical risk of injury or death to them. That sounds like the big liability to me, and taking no action here seems like the, you know, wrong thing to do. Safety is certainly my top priority whenever I'm biking around town. And I will continue to do what I know is safest for me. And I just ask that you allow me to do that without breaking the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a follow-up on the first person that spoke. It's about the water ban, obviously. And I just want to say that I'm a member of the South Kingston Sustainability Committee. And we are, this, this problem is forefront on our minds, and we're just hoping and encouraging that the town council is going to move forward and the town is going to move forward on, on a new ordinance, ordinance that I've looked at the North Kingston, same water, whatever you want to call it, water ban, water ordinance. And, and there seems pretty straightforward, and I would encourage this town to kind of follow the same path. And whoever needs our assistance or our encouragement, we're, we're there, wherever you are. I think, oh, you're still there. I don't know, Rich Bor-, oh, Rich is there too. Yeah, we, we'd love to help some kind of public.
Can you just state your name for the record?
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, Kim Falcone.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. I haven't been here in a while, Bob Traeger. I'm also a longtime resident, taxpayer, voter, person interested in what's going on around me. And that's why I come. And I didn't come for a while because I was on a little bit of a trip to Iceland and Norway. And I got a little taste of how other people live in the world. And on that trip, I was fortunate enough to talk to probably, I don't know how many people from every corner of this globe. And I'd like to report to you that even though they're from all corners of the globe, they're very well-informed about what's going on in our country. I was just, before I come here, of course, I, I probably listen to the NewsHour every night, but they had the retired Justice Kennedy on for about 10 minutes at the end. And he was asked a question right at the end about how, what he feels was the most important thing that he's done in his tenure. But I'm just going to give you one, two, three, four, five, five words that he said. He did, he couldn't answer that question. He says that he'll be thinking about that tonight when he's home before he goes to bed. But this is the simplistic, this is what I feel is going on here in this room every time I come here. And here's what he said, just simple words like this, "Give reasons for what we do." Period. Give reasons for what we do. It sounds simple, but it is what it's all about, isn't it? That's what you guys have to do. You have to give, you have to have a reason. You have to justify the reason. The reason has to make sense. And I was uplifted on that trip because I found out there's a lot of people that are very well-informed about our situation and their own situation and their own countries that are very, very difficult to. I say England especially. I've met quite a few from England. Anyway, I listened to something else today, just that before I got here. These are things that happened. I'm, I don't know what I'm going to say when I get in front of you. I am, I'm, I'm a little nervous usually, but I've already made a pledge to you that until I see something changing in the country in a direction that is starting to, makes me feel a little good inside. And I'm not here, I'm not getting there, guys. The stuff that happened just the other day now, the, the Pentagon, there, the, some rule and regulation they're making now that news people have to do some justification or whatever to ask questions there when, when the facts are that anything that was ever leaked out of the Pentagon came from people within. But that's another whole story. I mean, you can get into any of these topics you could talk all day about. That's just a topic that just came up now. And I'll, I'll say that I listened to, at the whole three speeches that were given, the ones that were given to the, the military, up the high-end military people of this whole country in one huge oratorium, had to sit there and listen to our defense war or whatever we want to call our department now. It's not defense anymore. The War Department's head. And I have, it's hard for me to stay with, stand it, to listen to it, to listen to that dialogue, talking to people that probably 95% of them could do the job better than he's doing it. So that's one. And then I had to listen to the president just recently because he's, he's got all kinds of accolades right now and justifiably so to a certain extent. But that doesn't erase all of the other things that are going. And it's immediately, I mean, this is one thing about being 85, I'm going to be 86 soon. You do have time to listen to our government, the C-SPAN, I've talked about it before. I have time to do it, and I, I find it usually is the best thing that's on compared to almost anything else. There's some nice masterpiece things on PBS that I, I enjoy that type of thing too. But anyway, I do have that time. It's a luxury.
Bob, you are a little bit over.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'm sorry. I think the main point was, "Give reasons for what we do." I think that thought alone is worth coming to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Phil Eden from Kingston Road. Thank you all for all the work you do for our town and for all the town employees. I also wanted to speak on the ordinance restricting use of the bike path at night. I mean, we, folks who bike are taxpayers like anybody else. People pay for roads and we pay for the bike path. And the idea that the bike path is not accessible for transportation or recreation at night is kind of crazy to me. It is obviously much, much safer. I, my brother works at Coast Guard House. I bike down, have a beer, hang out with him for a little bit. I bike home. To ask me to bike on 108 to get home from there is nuts. It's way more dangerous than biking on the bike path. I know there aren't streetlights on the bike path, but there's lots of roads in town that don't have streetlights. So why can I bike on a road without streetlights but not on the bike path? Folks obviously need to get to work. In, in my day job, and I'm here on behalf of myself as an individual, I represent the graduate assistants at University of Rhode Island. A lot of them bike to work. Dusk happens very early in the winter. They need to use the bike path, which we just built, that beautiful bike path, the URI, to get to work and to get back to, back to their homes. So that, that's it. I think that it is a, it is a safety issue. It's a fairness issue. It's a transportation issue. Obviously, there are liability concerns with everything, but, you know, put up a sign. They, I can go swimming at Narragansett Beach right now. There's no lifeguard on duty. There's a sign, "Swim at your own risk." Put up a sign on the bike path. We should be able to use this public infrastructure. I also did just want to briefly touch on the water ban because I appreciate a lot of back and forth on that. I'm sure you guys are inundated by some angry people who want to water their lawns. I do not want to pay more taxes so that they can water their lawns. So there are lots of sustainable alternatives, but we should not be planning our future and investing into huge infrastructure projects so people can have greener, unsustainable lawns. As Mike said, the climate's changing. We need to adjust our behavior. And there are lots and lots of residents, for every one angry person who emails you because they can't water their lawn or wash their car, there are thousands of residents who would rather not pay, pay more so that those people can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Brett Harrington, I'll be quick. Just to basically back what he said, I agree 100% with that. If you come to my yard, I have a private well, my grass is dead. Because I believe in water for me, water for the fire, and the necessary things for the, you know, in water or in your grass. Although we like green grasses, and not important, but for your constituents that have been hounding you, like the gentleman just said, your answer is simply blame your neighbors who have to have the green grass, have the automatic system, the water things going on and even when it's raining. And as Rich said earlier, several months ago, he talked about how much water was going just to water this grass, okay? Mike said to what Mike was saying, and I've been talking about this for years, we don't get the rainfall, but even more important, we don't get the snow anymore. We need like 20 inches, 30 inches of snow a year. And when that slowly melts, that's what actually replenishes the groundwater, not the, you know, these fast rains and stuff like that. So there's your answer to all these people that are barking at you, say, blame your neighbors. And, you know, we're in a unique situation here where there's a lot of money in this town, so they don't really care about how much their water bill is because they can pay it. You go to other towns where they're like, huh, I'm not going to water my grass. My water bill's too high, okay? And it'd be nice to basically shut them off, but you can't shut those people off because then they can't have a drink of water and they'll be barking at you at that. So your ordinance is the way, and simply I'm giving you the answer when you get, when there are all these calls is, just blame your neighbors.
All right, thank you. All right, we're now going to move on to public hearings. We do have another public comments segment after we get through new business. So if you haven't had a chance to speak yet, you will have a chance when we get there. 10A is a public hearing continued from September 8 and September 22, 2025, relative to proposed amendments to the town zoning ordinance, Article 5.5 Rental Dwellings, as shown in Exhibit 1 attached here too. Mike Orsillo, I'm going to go to you on this. This is something we continued a few times. We've discussed certain modifications. Go ahead.
Yep. Based upon recommendations from the planning board, we made proposed changes that were consistent with the three planning board recommendations. The one that I think you still haven't decided upon is, is the fee. I, I think that based on the last public hearing, that's the one that you wanted to address. So you tell me where you want to go with the fee situation. I think the other areas have been addressed.
All right. All right. So at the last meeting, there was a few things we discussed, one of which was the potential to have sort of tiered fees in the event that a certain owner of property had several units in one structure building, so to speak. We talked about giving them a reduced fee as opposed to paying on a per-unit basis. That's something we can flesh out here. I don't know if that's equitable or inequitable. Another thing we discussed at the past meeting, Mike, was the potential to give a reduced rate to those landlords who have registered their property with the state rental registration. I know one of which is LED registration. Another one is an actual short-term rental registration.
Correct.
And then another thing we did mention, we didn't go too far down, was the potential to offer different fees to short-term rental and longer-term rental, which would be those that don't qualify as short-term, what would be everything else. So. We did not.
Yeah, it's still open, the public hearing.
Do you, what, how do you want to do that part?
We can open that up, or if we want to discuss a little bit first, then open it up, whatever, whatever we prefer.
I feel like people have waited two hours.
All right, if you're here for the rental registration, public hearing, we're going to open that up. So invite them to come on up, as we do with the public comments. We just ask that you identify yourself. We're going to limit you to five minutes. When you begin speaking, this clock will begin counting down. You can use it as a way to gauge your time.
Hi.
And just, is the red button on? All right.
Hi, my name is Kristy Davidson. I am the property manager at Tower Hill Landing Apartments. I was at the last meeting, and all that was really discussed were the fees, which obviously is very important, but there is more to this than just the fees. Section 553 requires posting notices inside the dwelling apartments about trash, parking, and occupancy limits. However, things like that don't apply to multifamily developments.
If I could just interrupt, you all agreed to delete that from the ordinance, so that's no longer part of it. Assuming you adopt it, that section has been deleted.
All of it, including, including posting the lease inside the unit?
All of 553 has been deleted, yes, completely.
Well, I guess I'm done here then. However, I do have to say, with the fact that I manage 143 apartments, the fee is very burdensome when you have that many apartments. So please take that into consideration, especially when it's going to be an annual fee.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Elise Terrello. I'm in favor of this ordinance. I'm in favor of the fee. This, there is enforcement that's going to be involved in this, and it's going to cost the town resources. And I, I think it's important that the town have the resources to deal with the enforcement of this. I have a student rental right next to me, and last year, fortunately, it was nice and quiet. This year has, we've had multiple issues already this year. I'm keeping track of everything. But I have a right to the enjoyment of my property too, as do my neighbors. My neighbors don't appreciate having their children woken up at midnight by a loud party. I don't appreciate having garbage and red solo cups and empty beer cans strewn on my road. This is a real nuisance, and, you know, there, there are costs, not just to the landlords, but also to the people who have student rentals next door. And I think it's important that the town really get a tight handle on where these rentals are and have a mechanism for enforcing ordinances. One other thing that is not related to the rental, but if you guys could like shut your mics off when you're not talking because it is literally painful when we're getting feedback from multiple mics being on when people are talking. And so please, please, please shut your mics off. It hurts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this public hearing? Okay, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Second, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. All right, let's discuss this a little further now. Go ahead.
If I can start, just, Mike, if you can give us the explanation for deleting, deletion of Section 553?
Again, that was something that the planning board recommended because of the work it would take basically on behalf of anyone who is doing a rental, having to post things about dog leash laws, et cetera, et cetera. There's also an issue with posting of the actual lease. There's privacy issues that were brought up, et cetera. So that's why I think at least tentatively you all agreed to remove that. The, the other thing we agreed to do, based on the planning board recommendation, is come up with a specific time period. Um, the, the other thing we agreed to do, um, based on the planning board recommendation is to come up with a specific time period, um, of between November 30th and December 31th, in which to be able to get all this accomplished so that it's just not one set date. People can put their applications in during that period of time. The final issue that the planning board recommended is to evaluate the registry fee, um, against the cost of, to renters. The thought being that if we charge a hundred dollars per unit, that would just be passed on to whoever was renting. And, um, it's one thing if it's a vacationer, it's another thing if it's, you know, long-term rental with, um, a family, et cetera.
Well, Mike, that up, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 so I think the main, um, discussion that needs to happen is how do you want to handle the, right now it says $100 for each rental unit. We need to discuss how you want to modify that.
Do we have the ability to, uh, charge a higher fee to short-term rentals as compared to those that are not short-term rentals?
Yeah, we could do that. The fee for short-term rentals would be a hundred dollars per unit. The fee for anything over 30, we'd have to define that obviously. The fee for anything over, um, 30 days could be a different number.
So how would that apply to, let's say, uh, a landlord who Airbnb's all summer, but has URI kids leased September to May?
Yeah, I, I mean, and, and the other thing is that's going to be an administrative nightmare.
Okay, so that may provide administrative issues if we.
I, I, I really think you need to keep it simple because you don't want to have to hire a town employee just, huh, just to follow up on all of this.
So if we could go back, the goal of the rental registry was to give us data on how many are year-round residents, homeowners, or really someone who's a year-round renter is a resident, they're, they're just a renter, not a homeowner, right? So that when we could look at the home set exemption, we would have that. So I thought we bought software, AirDNA, are we still buying that? Are we still using that as a tool? Are we going to continue to use that?
No, it expired.
It expired, so we're no longer using AirDNA for anything?
I mean, we used it to a point and we still can, but it, we once, I, was it over a year ago?
Yeah. I know it didn't give us everything, but we spent money on something.
Yeah, in 2023, we have a snapshot, we have all of that data from 2023. So approximately 472 short-term rentals at that time. Um, also, you know, through the state, the short-term rentals are required to register through Department of Business Regulation. Um, so looked at the website today, there's approximately 444 active short-term rental registrations. Um, so that seems, eh, close to in line, those two numbers. However, the, um, I'll just note that the Rhode Island Department of Health, the disparity between what we estimate for residential, um, rental units is probably about 10% are registered approximately. So, and I don't, uh, believe their enforcement with, um, although they do have enforcement built into their law. It's, you know, they, they put it on the website that they're not looking to enforce, except, uh, the most extreme like offenders.
So, uh, does that, so we have, there's 440 some odd registered? And did you just say that that, that they think that's only 10%?
Uh, no, the short-term rentals are about 444 is what they have listed on the state's website. However, through the, there's also Department of Health requires all rental dwelling units to be registered through them, except short-term rentals, and that number is very undercounted. It's, um, you know, a few hundred approximately, but we expect at least 2,000 to 3,000, uh, year, year-round rentals.
Okay, thank you.
So here are my thoughts on, on this rental registration. So I think that the goal, eh, we have a few different goals for this, right? The first goal is to figure out how we can attain a home stay exemption the next fiscal year, right? That's one thing. However, on a different part of this is sort of the nudge theory of public policy, which is nudging private owners in the right direction through public policy. And so my suggestion to the council is that our long-term rentals that are 12 months or longer, either have no registration fee or the lowest registration fee possible. Then in a separate category, which would be short-term rentals from nine to 12 months, AKA URI students or college students, you either have an, an annual registration fee for a hundred dollars, uh, because we do need housing for our college students. And then the same category would be short-term rentals owner-occupied. So if you have an Airbnb in your house, you would have to register. Um, and the studies show that owner-occupied Airbnbs are much less, uh, destructive to neighborhoods as opposed to an investment property. And then I think that the town council should have short-term rentals, which are non-owner-occupied and are not nine to 12-month investments, to have a very high annual registration fee of at least $500. You take those fees and you either dump them into the, uh, to a fund that could, uh, go for an affordable housing fund, the one we have currently, or we could have a fund that could go into helping lower, uh, the tax rate for our, our residents, right? Because right now, if you have a short-term rental in Green Hill or in, you know, the south of Route 1, you're making tens of thousands of dollars a summer. And we're not getting any of that, that revenue back. And in fact, we're having such a problem with our water in a lot of these Airbnbs that they're just sucking down water all week. They're, they're making sure the grass is all green and then they're using a ton of water washing the sheets every Sunday for their Airbnbs. And again, our local hotels, which have standards that they have to, to oblige by at the state and the federal level and the town level, um, are getting shortchanged by these Airbnbs and Verbos. So again, just to reiterate, my idea is that short-term rentals or long-term rentals are as low as possible, um, or a $50 annual fee, short-term rentals of nine to 12 months, a hundred, um, or short-term rentals that are owner-occupied, either a hundred. And then long-term rentals that are, again, investment properties that are not nine to 12-month rentals, at least $500 annually, so the town can get and recoup this money back. So those are my thoughts on that. Um, other towns have done this, Newport has done this, um, because they were getting eaten alive, uh, by investment properties going into the Newport neighborhoods. But it's just something to consider. Um, and again, I do want to get this rental registration out as soon as possible, so that's just my thoughts on that.
All right, any other thoughts up here?
Sure, um, I read Jay's memo that's attached to the agenda with respect to the fee structure. Um, I think it makes sense. I still have concerns about, well, he uses per property. Um, the draft says per unit and I think that's something that the council's got to figure out. Um, the fourth part of the registration fee of $500 plus for short-term rentals, non-owner-occupied and investment. Um, there's a logic to it in that they're, they're operating a business. It's just like the bowling alley or Speedcraft, whatever you want to, whatever example you want to use. I'm not sure that 500 is appropriate. It may be at some point, but just starting out, that sounds high. Um, and the other thing I want to point out, just so that everybody has the same understanding, when we're talking about the state registration, um, with the Department of Business Regulations, that's strictly short-term rental. So giving somebody a credit for having registered with the state is only going to apply to the short-term rental people. Um, and the Department of Health registration, I don't think is even really applicable here. That has to do with lead paint and the, I think Jamie pretty much said, there's no real enforcement. They're more, the Department of Health is more reactive when it comes to lead paint, where they find out a child's been poisoned, then they'll start investigating.
So, uh, Mr. Vice President, so for Newport, I'm reading around line, uh, they have a $15 filing fee, $500 fee for home occupation property, uh, and then a thousand dollars fee per unit, non-home occupation property. So they're charging a thousand dollars, um, as opposed to 500.
Is there a short-term rental for Belcourt Castle?
I wish.
Uh, but, uh, to be serious though, not everybody is doing it 52 weeks a year. There may be some people who have lived here for 40 years, they're going to go on a trip in July and in two weeks they're going to rent it out, or a week, or a few days, I don't know. But it just seemed, that's where the 500 just struck me as high. It could be somebody just doing it once in the course of a year.
So if somebody doing it once, that would be an owner-occupied Airbnb.
Okay.
As opposed to say, I bought an investment property in Green Hill, I'm renting it a couple of weeks a year, but then I'm not, I'm taking this property off the market for college students. And then therefore the college student's got to go somewhere else.
Okay.
So this nudge is in the right direction.
I see it, thanks.
Jamie Gorman, oh, sorry. Oops, sorry. I, I just wanted to say that I, I think it's a, a good idea and, um, and I, I like the idea of having, um, the short-term rentals, uh, be able to be used in a, um, in a manner that will help taxpayers, that will be able to, um, apply that somehow, whether we call it a homestead exemption or we buff up some other, um, exemptions. I, I think it's a good idea.
Jamie Gorman, come on up here. I want to talk a little bit about the actual practical enforcement of something that we've sort of discussed here. Uh, we'd really have to sort of define, uh, you know, these different categories such that if you fit into one, you don't fit into another. Because the example I just gave to start this out was landlord rents for nine months to URI kids in the Airbnb all summer. That is a nine-month rental that is also a non-owner-occupied, short-term rental, investment property. Now, I think that this becomes a little bit of a, uh, enforcement administration type issue when it's, it's not clear in the ordinance we draft or enact as to, all right, what fee is a landlord to pay for a specific property that they rent out? I think that's problematic. Do you agree with that?
Uh, I, I would agree with that. So if, you know, we're relying on the honor system, we can verify if they're registered with the state. Um, but to determine if they're being accurate, if they're putting it on or registering it rather as a, you know, uh, long-term rental and, you know, for students and it, you know, or for anybody else for that matter. But it was intended or the marketing as a short-term rental, I think it's going to be difficult, but if you're relying on majority being honest, um, I just think there's going to be some tweaking along, along the way that we're going to have to, you know, find ways to determine. And it may involve, uh, you know, a third party like AirDNA or, or Granicus to step in and assist.
Well, I mean, someone who does rent for nine months to, uh, I don't know, students and then rents for the summer Airbnb, short-term rentals, I mean, they would be honest in saying that they would fall into the fee that is for those who rent for nine months as opposed to those that, you know, just strictly short-term because they're not. So I, I, I just think there's potential problems by classifying different fees this way. I agree that we want to discourage short-term rentals and that we should charge a higher fee as compared to non-short-term. Uh, but I think structuring it with four different classes becomes a little bit of an administrative issue. I think the easiest way, obviously easiest is one fee, one class of fees. But if we want to differentiate, I think it would be more practical to do maybe two classes of fees. One whereby if the, if the property or unit is rented, uh, within a period of time of less than 30 days, even if they rent for nine months outside of summer, for example, they would be subject to a short-term rental registration fee. Whereas if the property, uh, rents for, does not rent for a period of time that is less than 30 days, but does rent for a period of time that's in excess of that, they would pay a different fee, a lesser fee. That would be a way to sort of buy our policy, making an easier way to sort of administer these fees and enforcement of, you know, paying the fees and registering, but also encouraging policy that, you know, encourages more longer-term leases and discarders short-term rentals. I think that makes more practical sense. I think we're going to have a difficult time with this ordinance if we go this far with it.
Mr. President, I'm not dying on, uh, dying on the hill of having four different classifications. I would rather have it, um, simplified and in an agreement with the rest of our counselors to get where we're trying to go here. Um, but I do think that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Newport's already done this, right? And if we look at what other towns and cities in Rhode Island have done, I think that we can, it's pretty straightforward. I think that two classifications might be the best way to go. Um, you know, if you're regis, if you're renting your property for 30 days or less, then, you know, it's going to, it's a short-term rental.
Yes.
And, uh, we don't want to penalize folks renting out to college students, um, who are, just want to enjoy the property in the, in the summer as well. Um, but again, I have no qualms with simplifying the category, you know, the categories. Um, but I do think that we should be taxing at a high level and matching what the rest of the towns and cities have been doing, which is 500 or a thousand dollars. Newport's doing a thousand, so I don't think we need to go that high, but, and again, I think, I trust the professionals in your office, right? They're going to be able to figure this out. And it may have a little bit of a time adjustment in order to figure it out, but I have faith in you, Jamie. I have faith.
I appreciate that. Um, I, I would just note that, you know, if the, the amount of long-term related to short-term, you would want that to offset if the long-term registrations would be reduced from 100. That'd be my only.
So you're saying the, uh, the fee for the short-term should be high enough such that any, uh, loss of revenue for having a fee that equals the long-term would make up that difference?
If we're going to, if you're going to propose a multi-tier structure, I, I think that would be helpful to defer the costs and administrative costs.
Okay. I mean, right now we have just a hundred-dollar flat fee. That's the amount that's in contemplation under the ordinance that we're looking at here. Uh, we could potentially have the hundred-dollar fee be applied to, uh, any, any unit that landlord rents that it does not do any short-term rental with respect to such property, keep it 100. And then every unit that, uh, any landlord owns that engages in short-term rentals, regardless of in addition to that, it does engage in longer-term rentals, will be charged to a higher fee. I am sort of hesitant to go as high as 500, but I think maybe double the fee, 200? That would easily make up any difference, would actually give you more revenue than that contemplated under the ordinance that we're looking at already.
I know, I know it seems like a high fee, $500, right, for these short-term investments. They're making hundreds of thousands of dollars a summer. It's, this is a part of the investment. They're not, they're not going to sneeze, it's either 500 or 200. I mean, they're, they're, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that folks are making off these short-term rentals, destroying neighborhoods, right? Be creating, you know, cul-de-sacs of folks that don't live in neighborhoods anymore. Um, it, I, that's what my opinion is. It's not going to be that much.
I think some are, some are maximizing profit to the extent they are that high, but I don't think all of them are. And, uh, I think, I do agree, you know, we charge a higher fee, discard short-term rentals, that's why we have a tiered fee. We'd rather have long-term rentals, but we have to charge some sort of fee, otherwise there's no deterrence aspect at all. You have to charge a fee in order for them to register. But I think, and I know a lot of these short-term rentals are business motivated, they are businesses. Maybe they are formed as an entity to own property to rent real estate, that could be the purpose of the entity. But I think that we're perhaps, in my opinion, going too far in, uh, you know, sort of discouraging business to that extent by charging such a high fee. I just don't feel comfortable with it. Uh, but I'm, you know, certainly open as we gather more data, see what's happening, modify, change the ordinance, have a public hearing, increase the fees. That's just my take here, right, as of now.
Can we split the difference between 500 and 200 and agree on 350?
I'm quite okay with that.
Go ahead. Jamie, I got one more question for you. In terms of administering this and enforcement issues, in the original version of the ordinance, um, it talks about per unit. Can you talk or address the difference for administration and enforcement in per unit versus per property? I think that's, that's one of the. I think that's, that's one of the last things that I'm still struggling with.
I guess that's, did we flesh out if this was gonna apply to Tower Hill landings where they have 193 units, if that would be, because certainly if majority of those, such as Harbor Village is another one, where they have 300, between 300 and 400?
That's the question for you. You've got a property with 193 units in it. What's the difference to your office in terms of administering and enforcing? I would think that at some point, there's an economy of scale.
Yeah, and historically, we haven't had any issues with respect to the typical short-term rental and rental issues. Either of those properties, they're managed, you know, pretty well. So I would say that, you know, a fee of upwards of, you know, $30,000 for, I'd be surprised if, you know, they weren't upset about that, but administrative burden, I wouldn't see as a huge hill.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I'm gonna keep going back to, like, the goal, not that Jamie isn't doing an excellent job conveying all of this, but is the goal to figure out the data for the homestead exemption? Or I'm hearing from all of you as well, we also wanna discourage short-term rentals 'cause they injure the character of our town in some ways. There's some moral, we don't like that, too much of that, right? So like, what's the point that we're trying to do? Like, we just wanna collect the data, we know there's other ways than creating a fee structure and taxing, just putting a little fee on people, right? We could, we know that Wendy, the tax assessor, can look at the addresses where the tax bills go. If you own your home, the property tax bill goes to you. If you don't own your, and it matches, I'm a homeowner, it matches my address. Other people who are not homeowners, it goes to an alternate address. You're a renter, you're a renter. So you figure it out. If the goal is that highway, there's one, there's one approach. If there is the goal that we wanna encourage year-round rentals, 'cause we wanna have people to have housing, and it's another thing. So it's confusing to me, 'cause I could put on every hat and argue Jay's right for something, you're right for something, Patty's right for something, so I'm quite conflicted on what the purpose is. If the purpose is really for this homestead exemption, help me understand, let's do it simply, right? If, then let's not have this. If it's another thing, we'll do something else. That's how I'm hearing it all. Am I mistaken?
I think there's very aspects of this, one of which is to get, gather data for a homestead. Another one is to sort of encourage and discard certain activities in town. I mean, that's what government does when it sets policies.
Right. But I think that the, we want, I think this rental registration can't do all of those things well and do what we want, because if you start doing all these tiers and things, then it creates a whole nother layer, as opposed to just, what was the original goal? We wanna know how many people live in their home and don't rent it out, they're owner-occupied spaces. Is it 70, 30? It seems like that's what Wendy's data showed. So at 70, 30, right, with 10, just for the sake of math, 10,000 households, we should have 3,000 leasing households, right? If it's about that, right? Is that kind of, I just, I have a hard time figuring out where we're going, so I can't figure out how to give input on the policy because, and the fee structure? Because if it's just to give us data for the homestead exemption, we don't need all this complicating stuff in my mind, but maybe I'm seeing it a different way.
I can only speak for myself, and I just wanna point out, thank you for saying I was right a little bit tonight, so that's good.
Well, everyone, everyone has a valid something.
Yeah, I'm just kidding. So I guess my, so rental registration, the initial proposal was a $100 flat fee, cross the board, whether you own 147 properties or you own one property in Shadowbrook.
Each unit.
Each unit, excuse me, unit, each unit $100. And we got feedback that said, that is too much on the renter and the property owners, it's gonna be burdensome, and we're gonna pass that directly along to the renter. Okay. So we look at that, we looked at that, and we couldn't come to an agreement there. So yes, I agree with you, counselor, this whole point of doing this was for the homestead exemption, but as we began to open it up, we said, hey, you know, while we're here, we should probably address these concerns of short-term rentals versus long-term rentals. So I agree with you that it's a little bit messy, my memorandum that I wrote and proposed, right? And I'm down for two classifications of rentals, one that really does not affect renters that are residents of South Kingston, and one that directly goes after the super short-term rentals that are just making hand over fist in our neighborhoods. I think we can do both. I think we can do both of them.
I think it's not an either-or proposition. We started out in November of '22, talking about this initially just as a short-term rental registration, in part, or mostly, to get data for whether or not a homestead exemption was possible. However, I've now been here three years, and we have had repeated instances come before us about problems with short-term rentals, sometimes problems with long-term rentals, and the clear indication is, as this town continues to grow, and not through anybody in government's actions, we are getting the overflow of what Narragansett has been for a long time, which is there are more and more rentals, whether it's short-term because it's partly a tourist town, or whether it's student rentals because Narragansett has already maxed out. All of those things can be true at the same time. We're getting more rentals, in the future, we're going to have more rentals, and this is a structure to at least begin to get our arms around it. So I don't think it's an either-or, I think it's all of the above.
About 300 and 100?
I would prefer 350.
Can you come down to 300?
I'm, this is uncomfortable, I mean-
I'm so sorry you're uncomfortable, counselor. So yeah, I could-
Well, I was speaking, so I just think it's uncomfortable to sort of throw around-
I was also speaking. I was speaking, actually, the Vice President's correct, but I'll be quiet.
And, like, it's an, this is, somebody's gonna pay that, and businesses are gonna pay that, so let's just take it seriously, that's all I ask. Take it seriously that somebody's gonna end up paying thousands, 500, whatever, and that's all?
We understand that. We understand that coming into this meeting. We understand the implications of the ordinance.
And I'm taking this seriously, 'cause I wrote a whole memorandum, counselor. So to imply that no one's taking this seriously here after debating it for the past hour is a little short-sighted, but that's just my opinion, and I'm new here, so maybe I need some more long-term longevity here. Look, I'm down to come down to 50 and 300, if that's what the council agrees with, because I don't think $100 per unit is going to be good for any of the renters. That's my opinion as a renter.
My thoughts were 300 and 100. I didn't know that we were contemplating reducing the, you know, anything that is not rented as a short-term rental would be 50. Any other thoughts on that?
Well, you know, it sort of makes sense, we were talking about 350 and 50, so if we, you know, that's $400, whereas if we did it 300 and 100, that would also be $400. So I'm not sure if that makes any sense, but I would be fine with the 100 and 300, or the 350 and 50.
Alright. Jim, you got something on this?
I do. One thing to keep in mind is, let's look at a neighboring town, 9,000 properties in Narragansett. 30%, 33% are rental properties. 33% are vacation homes, 33% are owner occupied. Anytime you have short-term rentals reach, especially now, where you can have five bedrooms in each house, the drain on resources will be immense. Maybe if not right now, but in the future for sure. Waste water, water, police, EMS, fire. You stop putting, think about every Sunday, a house with five bedrooms, 20 people are gonna be moving into that house. I know this. And it's because you got two families coming in and friends. You're gonna get more EMS calls, you're gonna get more police calls, you're gonna be a tremendous drain on waste water. I think part of the problem in Narragansett, if you've been reading the news, that Narragansett is maxed out on their waste water usage. And I've talked to many Narragansett residents, even today, and they're comparing it now to 20, 30 years ago. Why is it so maxed out right now? Is it because the rentals are taking up, they're there, you know, 12 months a year now, it's a desirable place. South Kingston is a very desirable place. Our houses have been sold as businesses. Look at Eastwood Look. I was a town manager in Narragansett, so I've seen some of this stuff firsthand. Look at Eastwood Look. That started out as one of the original affordable housing developments, where people could buy a house back in the 70s for $40,000, middle-income people. Most of those houses are now short-term rentals. And the tremendous drain on Narragansett for all of that stuff that I mentioned, EMS, fire, police, waste water and water, is real. So not that we're trying to push back and discourage all that, we need to prepare for it. Also, the administrative cost of running a rental registration program. You need someone who's gonna monitor the hundreds, if not thousands, of homes that are rental, registered as rentals. You're gonna, you're gonna have billion inspectors who are gonna have to go out and check on scrupulous landlords that are trying to cram as many people into basements without egress or ingress that other people will be calling about. You're gonna have administrative costs with mailings, court appearances, and so forth and so on. There is an administrative cost. So this is something we're trying to get ahead of here. We're one of the last towns to have a rental registration. So, and Newport is a good model. I've looked at Newport's, it's a good model. The fee structure, you're all gonna have to decide on that, but we do need resources to run a rental registration program.
Alright, thank you, Jim. Alright, I think we're close. I support a 300 for any unit that is rented for a period of 30 days or less, and then a separate fee for properties that are not rented for that period of time, but are rented for longer periods of time, of $100. So 300, 100, I think that works.
Mr. President, I would think that, again, propose $50 for the single unit and 350 for the extreme short-term rental. I think that if we catch a lot of feedback from the town that we need more resources in order to handle this, then I think that we could come back and reorganize, or restructure the fees. But I do think, I liked what Councilwoman Alley pointed out, we're going for 400 bucks for the town in order for us to handle this, this processing of what we're trying to do here. So again, I think it should be 50 and 350. However, if my fellow council members think it should be less, then I could be persuaded to change.
Any other thoughts up here? Go ahead.
Just a question, because the numbers are being thrown back and forth quickly. Are we talking 50 and 350 for a unit or a property?
Unit. We haven't differentiated that.
So somebody with 173 units?
143.
143 units is looking at $7,000?
Do you propose a different tranche of fee for someone that owns multiple units in one structure?
Well, we, when we started the hearing several weeks ago, I was concerned about having it per unit, because there are places in town that have a lot, and that's why I asked Jamie the question about administering some large property, what the difference is in terms of the effort that his office has to make, because I don't think we wanna just impose a flat fee for the sake of sort of a round number. It makes sense to me that some properties are going to require more effort on Jamie's office part than others. That's why I was concerned about the per-unit language in the ordinance to begin with.
May I ask a question to the solicitor? Is there a way to craft the ordinance where the fees may be reviewed annually and adjusted by the council? Because perhaps you take a middle path and do something reasonable, right? And then determine, like, in a year or two, like, we need to do some shifting, and being a little more nimble by the way the ordinance is crafted?
So, or maybe even like-
Are you following me? Does that mean-
The answer is yes.
That answers, yeah.
In the fee section, you can say, these fees are subject to annual review.
A low introductory rate to encourage compliance?
There you go.
And then if you do it within a certain amount of time, then you get the guarantee.
It's just like, we set the beach pass, we set this rate for something. I would rather, it's easier for any future council to make adjustments if it's set in a way that it's not a public hearing and all this, that it's just a new business item where we discuss the fees. Everyone following? 'Cause I feel like, we don't know, we don't, there's parts of this that, that we don't know what we wanna get out of it, and we don't know how we would wanna use it. 'Cause when you sit here and you listen, and originally Jay says, use it for affordable housing, use it for abating taxes, those are great ideas, right? And then you hear Jamie say, I'm gonna need it to hire staff, I'm gonna need it to have letters, and so you don't know how much he needs, right? And really, in my opinion, all I wanna know is the information. I would make it free, because I want people to know what it is, right? And maybe, maybe it is free for the first six months, so we get people to do it. I don't know. But, but moving the fee structure out is the main point I want us to think about, 'cause we could be clever and nimble in the future and make adjustments more quickly.
I have no qualms at putting a sunset on this, or re-looking at it, like the counselor, or Mike just said, these are subject to change and discussion.
We do have a legal base.
What he said. But I do think it's reasonable to have a fee of around $300, if the municipality 20 minutes up the road is charging $1,500 for the same short-term rental. I don't think it's unreasonable for this town council to take a stand and put in a lower rate for short-term, or for long-term rentals, and have a higher rate for short-term rentals. In fact, other municipalities are doing that. It's not unreasonable. In fact, it's proper planning of this town council. And if we're looking at per property versus per unit, that's gonna be a decision here of how do we wanna do it? We have had feedback from landowners and property owners who have multiple units on one piece of property. But again, in order to get this across, I'm quite fine with $300 for a long-term, a short-term rental to start off with, but again, keeping the long-term rental of $50. And again, to look at this next year. I mean, we start with this, and then we decide as a council that we should keep long-term rentals to zero, or increase it. That's great, we can do that. But I think today, we should make a decision on what we wanna do. And you've heard what I wanna do.
I agree, we should make a decision tonight. That sounds reasonable. Part of me still thinks that there's gotta be some sort of scale, maybe a maximum fee, without tying it to the number of units.
So Mike, just a suggestion. Tower Landing is an apartment complex, right, versus you might have five little cabins or something, right? Somebody owns five houses in town, it's very different than enforcement where there's a, one person shows up in this, like, it might be just a flat fee for an apartment complex, as opposed to, I don't know, the other person?
Yeah. If I could jump in, just in terms of, to make this simpler, if you, if you said rentals of 30 days or less, per unit, per unit is $300. Rentals of 31 days or more, per unit, I'd still use the language, per unit, $50, but not to exceed, and then we can plug a number in. Like, for instance, this person's, it would be $7,100 at $50 a unit. But if you said not to exceed, pick a number, 2,500, 3,000, 1,000- But if you said, "Not to exceed," pick a number, 2,500, 3,000, 1,000, you can easily write that into the ordinance. It's $50 per unit, up to, not to exceed. That'd be the easiest way to make this work.
I like that.
In a fee structure outside the ordinance.
Well, we'd do that with the annual review, et cetera.
Yeah. But we do have to come up with what the cap is.
What would a fair amount be? What do we think a fair amount would be?
Well, if you think about these large things, this is, I forget.
Tower Hill Landing.
I know, I was gonna use your name, but now I can't remember your name. But like, they have a staff, right? There is an ability to, like, track down the person in charge, to go, "There's a problem, there's an issue, let me follow," Jamie can follow up with the person, as opposed to, like, you know, they're on-site. I don't know. I think there's definitely an economy of scale here, it doesn't have, I even think 1,000 seems kind of high.
I was gonna say, $1,000 max.
I actually have no problem with 1,000.
I see, a nod. So, 1,000...
This is where public participation influences policy.
Yeah, it's really important, thank you.
We can't hear you from the audience, unfortunately, because when you go up there, you go on the...
So, if you have that consensus, the fee schedule 554 would now say, "There shall be a registration fee as follows: $300 for rentals of 30 days or less, $50 for rental units of 31 days or more, not to exceed $1,000 in total." That section will also say, "The fee schedule shall be revived, reviewed on an annual basis." And then at a subsequent time, because we can't do it tonight, I'll do something that moves the fee schedule outside of the ordinance, so that you can just review it without public hearings and reprinting the ordinance, et cetera.
And with that, I'll move the question.
What is that?
Move the question.
What is that?
Do we now have...
I think you could say you could move, "Public hearing item 10A as amended."
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second and a discussion. I have a question. I just sort of want to flush out the rationale behind putting a cap on those apartment buildings. I just, I'm not quite, sort of seeing how that is equitable, as compared to other, let's say someone owns a duplex, or they own several duplexes. Because it's, it would be several properties, they'd be subject to the fee on a per-unit basis, and it wouldn't be capped at 1,000. Am I correct on that?
You know, it just gets more complicated. I don't know how many people own 10 or 20 duplexes. I just don't think that exists out there. I think you're talking about the big apartment complexes, so the fact that there is someone to deal with does make it simpler. I think it does make sense, Rory. I think if there were examples, and maybe we'll see this when we start getting the registrations in, of one property owner that has multiple duplexes or triplexes, I don't think those exist in town, I really don't, but that's the anecdote.
There's a couple duplexes in Perryville.
So, I'm still of the mindset, are we voting on this fee structure? Because I'm of the mindset, that if you want the information, you gotta make it introductory, like Patty says, to get people to do it. After a year, we could change it, we could adjust it upward, and then that would get, drive policy to say, like, we don't, we want to discourage it, sort of. I'm just not, I'm not loving this, but it's gonna go somewhere, so I'm just gonna give my input. I think the fee is also high, it's just another layer that we add to the people. I would keep the fees low.
Are we still in discussion, Mr. President?
We're still in discussion.
On the motion.
Yeah, discussion on the motion, which is the 350 with the $1,000 cap.
So, my only discussion is that I think that this is a suitable compromise. I think that this gets to what we're trying to do, which is establish short-term rental. I think it doesn't antagonize property management owners that own hundreds of properties, and it also doesn't attack the small renter with $100 fee, $50. I'm not saying $50 isn't a lot, you know, $50 is a lot of money, but over a year, it's a little more equitable. And I think that Councilwoman Bergner made a great point today. Let's re, or, in the fine print, like the counselor said, that we can renegotiate this next year, if it's not going as how we want to, without going into a public hearing. But nobody's getting everything they want out of this, but we all are getting a short-term rental, which is great, and I think, and I support the measure.
All right. I'll just say, I have some reservations about moving forward with the ordinance that we've come to a compromise on. But, like you said, we're all sort of at different standpoints, and we do need to compromise, so I get that. One thing I'm just having trouble sort of digesting, interpreting, coming to the understanding on is why we would give the owners of an apartment building sort of, some sort of relief from the ordinance applying to them, to the same effect that it applies to someone who, you know, just owns a separate plot of land and rents it. I just, I don't understand how that's equitable. I don't understand how we think that makes sense, but, because we're kind of at a difference here, and because of compromise, I'm okay to move forward on this, and if we think it's, you know, not working, when we look at this again, you know, at the annual review about a year from now, then we'll address it then.
The other way you could do it is, you could just cap it at 20 units, that gives you the $1,000, so that whether you're an apartment owner unit, or you happen to own 10 duplexes, it would be the same.
I'd prefer that.
Okay. So, what, instead of saying $50 per unit, not to exceed $1,000, we could say $50 per residential unit, up to 20 units, and that's the $1,000.
Okay. And the short-term's are not subject to any cap, so theoretically, if you want 100 short-terms, it's 300 times the number of units.
Do we have to redo the motion, then?
You're still saying "as amended," and I have the amendments.
Lovely.
So, it would be $1,000 for up to 20 units?
In other words, the ordinance will now read $50 per unit, up to, not to exceed 20 units. So, starting at the 21st unit, you don't have to pay a fee.
Such that the cap applies to apartment buildings, and/or persons who own several plots of land?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, for 20 single-family homes? 20 single-family homes that you rent out on a yearly lease, you're gonna be capped out at 1,000.
That's correct.
And if you own 21, you're still gonna be capped out of...
Right. It's by units, not building type or whatever.
Right, it's 20 units.
And Rory, I think you're trying to nudge the large-scale property owners to not pass that down to the renter, right? I think that's the goal here. So, we're not going the full, but we're also saying, "Hey, don't pass that down to the renter," and boost, you know, their rent for the next year.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No opposed.
All right, so that passes 4 to 1. All right, that is now gonna bring us to 11 new business. Mark Russo, come on up.
Council President, with your permission, I would, Item C has got two components to it. One is the new winter rates for the aggregation program, and also an authorization or resolution for the town manager to sign the extended contract.
All right.
Okay. So, with us tonight is Patrick Roche and Dawn Oyer. I was gonna say you were, but it's Oyer. So, I've known Patrick since the inception of this program, going back when the Sustainability Committee brought it to the town council for approval. And he's worked tirelessly to keep our electric rates low, and Dawn is recently, two years in, as I'll introduce yourself to you. So, with that being said, the program is here on the screen. Patrick.
Excellent, great, thank you, council. So, if we could, maybe just, yeah, perfect, Slide 1. So, as Mark was saying, this is the winter pricing that's going into effect in November, and the town's been doing some outreach about this. The kind of big takeaways here are that prices this winter are about 10% lower than last winter, and we continue for your standard product, which most people are in, continue to be, continues to cost a little less than Rhode Island energy, while also having more renewable energy. And participants, of course, can change their program option at any time, or leave the program at any time. So, these prices will go into effect in November and last until May. And then if we go to the next slide, just zooming out, looking more at how the program has been performing, so when we wrap up this current pricing term, that will be about three years of providing residents with lower electricity supply that's also cleaner than Rhode Island energy. And that has led to a pretty big impact environmentally, with about 9.2 million kilowatt-hours of renewable electricity purchased above the state standard. And we've got some equivalence there in terms of what that equates to, in terms of avoiding emissions from, say, 3.2 million pounds of coal, or the carbon you would sequester by planting, or having 2,900 acres of forest, for example. And, pardon the typo, but participation remains very stable and high, roughly at launch levels, which, again, is important, because people can leave this program at any time. So, we see that as a really important marker of the attractiveness of the program. And then if we go to the final slide, so as Mark mentioned, the item before you is the contract extension. So, your program, as you may remember, is part of a seven municipality buying group, and that group originally selected the current supplier, Nextera, as a unanimous group using that buying power. And we worked with the group to do a request for proposals for a successor supplier to take over at the end of your current term. And that group met and evaluated and collectively recommends continuing with Nextera for another five-year term. And the, you know, really important things here are that, again, individuals can retain the right to opt-out at any time, and the program doesn't commit the town to any expenditure of funds. All the costs for the program are recovered in those electricity rates that we were, say, looking at on the first page there. So, I wanted to keep it brief, but we're happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Thank you.
Can you tell me when our contract is up?
Yeah, sure, the current contract ends at the end of 2027.
I did notice when the contract was first awarded, there was a competitive bidding process that went on. Are we gonna be able to do that again, or is there a way for us to do that again, Mark? Rather than just...
Yeah, so, I might not have been clear, that was what the group did this summer, put out a competitive request for proposals.
I see. I just am somewhat concerned by reading a lot of the press about NextEnergy with some of the things that I've seen happening in Massachusetts, Maine, and Florida. So, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're sort of doing the right thing here by our town. And so, just, you know, sort of wondering if there are other options for us at this point, rather than sticking with New, NextEnergy, or New Energy, whatever. Just a lot of the stuff that I read in the, you know, pretty much everywhere is cause for concern with some of the stuff that I've been reading.
Yeah, no, good questions, and I don't, I can't speak to exactly what concerns you've heard. I will say, when looking at the qualifications, we did have multiple bidders, and Nextera has, I think, an important part was their demonstrated track record, both financially, but also environmentally, so sourcing all of the renewable energy that the program needs, from actually from within Rhode Island. And the, I think, you know, Nextera is, I think that, you know, they're a large company, they operate in different markets. This entity is not related, you know, it's not governed by the Florida Power and Light Utility, which is, you know, under the Nextera umbrella, but this is a subsidiary that has nothing to do, you know, there's no connection between them. And I think also, you know, it's important, we look at the credentials of a supplier that can serve you reliably, and, you know, commit to and deliver on the price, and all the promises that they've made, and that ends up being a fairly small pool of suppliers. And so, I think Nextera's done that pretty well, and they also are one of the largest owners of renewables in the U.S., so I think they've also demonstrated on that side of the ledger, I guess, they've done well.
All right. So...
It's, I'm just looking at their political contributions, I think that's what you're most interested in, I can't...
Well, it's also the main thing with the, you know, there was a lot of, you know, I don't want to really get into all of the things that I've been reading, but it's not just the dark money, it's, you know, it's other stuff, too.
So, just want to put it sort of straight and blank, so we understand. In order to continue down the route of the community aggregation program, which we've been participating in for the last several years, which has provided savings to residents throughout town, we would need to authorize the town manager to execute the contract with Nextera to continue this on, is that correct? That's the only way to really continue this.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, even if we had problems with Nextera, because of, I don't know, things we see online, or whatever we read in the paper, or whatever it may be, if we want to continue to participate in the community aggregation program to provide electricity savings to our residents, this is what we have to do.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, like Patrick said, there's a very limited scope of companies that actually offer the service, and because it is really, you know, a niche area, especially in the municipal aggregation, and so, yes, you are correct, Mr. President, if this is, if the intention is to continue on this program, Nextera would be the choice to go with.
Thank you.
Are there any other municipal programs besides these seven?
So, we have three other communities that we're engaged with. One of them, your neighbor to the north, is looking at launching soon, so North Kingston is looking at launching soon, and then, with the same cohort, and, yes, with Good Energy and the same cohort. And then we have two other communities that did get their PUC approval at the same time, Bristol and Middletown. They have not yet launched their programs, they've been kind of monitoring and seeing how you guys got along. So, those are two pending. And then Westerly did engage an additional consultant, but they have not launched a program, nor do I believe that they've finalized anything through the PUC.
But of the 39 citizen towns in Rhode Island, this is the only group that is actively doing it.
This is the only active program, absolutely.
What was the impetus for going for a five-year extension on a contract that still has two years to it?
Yeah, so Rhode Island has somewhat of a unique purchasing timeline with regard to the energy supply. You know, Rhode Island Energy operates on multiple, they do multiple purchases throughout the year, and that's kind of how they, you know, reconcile and come up with the prices due to those multiple purchases in time. And so, to be competitive with that, and to make sure, one of the things that South Kingston, in particular, has asked us about, has, can we get away from this, like, six months, every six months we're changing prices, that's sort of having some, a level of consistency and predictability, but also we're thinking about other innovation opportunities and avenues. And quite frankly, businesses, right, want consistency in order to be able to innovate. And so, I think this is an opportunity to really look at, okay, what is the future of energy? You know... You know, speaking of things you've seen on the news, we're in volatile times when it comes to energy markets. So having consistency and stability, giving business that predictability and comfort, knowing that they've got that business coming in allows some additional flexibility. And there's hoping, you know, I'll let Patrick either correct me or add on to what I say because, you know, Patrick is, comes up with and sees how the markets operate in other states and tries to bring those innovations here. So that's a long, long answer to a short question, but I think it'll meet multiple goals.
How many submissions did you receive to the RFP?
We only actually received two submissions. And I think that highlights just the limit of the number of, the limited number of companies that are able to meet a program like this.
Thank you.
Senator, thanks for coming today. Thank you for coming tonight. And Mark, we love you, you know. We renew this for five years. We have energy prices going down this winter. Thank God, because they're already astronomically high, 30% increase last winter. PUC, please stop raising the prices, PUC. We do this tonight. I'm not asking for a guarantee, but do you think this will lead us or place us in a position to have sustained lower rates even by in the 10th percentile? You know, you mentioned that we're really trying to show confidence in this program by having South Kingstown, Central Falls, Providence, you know, et cetera, West Greenwich. And so we're putting our, we're putting skin to the game here, right? So are we getting something back on this?
Yeah, great question. So I think that when the group initially, I think the short answer is yes. When the group initially selected NextEra, NextEra was bringing a strategy, a purchasing strategy, that they said, you know, hey, this has worked really well for the entire Cape Cod. This has worked really well for a big buying group they do out in Ohio. We think it can work really well here, too, in Rhode Island with some modifications. So now, you know, we'll have about three years of seeing that play out in that way, right? We have been able, they have been able to return those lower prices. And so I think it gives, that's what gave the group, when they were evaluating them, I think, that confidence to say yes. And as Don was mentioning, we're in increasingly volatile times. There's a lot of different challenges. The state is rolling out smart meters, right, which are going to add new questions about how we, how we price electricity. The PUC is going to be asking a lot of questions about that. We want a committed partner, but also a committed partner and a model that we think is really a strong foundation. So I think that the short answer is yes.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this resolution.
And one other question. When we talk about municipalities that are considering or getting close to joining, which would, you know, increase the buying power here, this is sort of like an economies of scale. The more that join, I guess, the lower the cost could be and the more sort of leverage we have to obtain lower prices. That's how this works, is that correct?
Yes, exactly. And the group did, you know, first off, the group is quite large to begin with. So you achieved an economy of scale that was even big enough to attract a supplier like NextEra. And then as we add more on, exactly what you said there, yeah. So the addition of North Kingstown is a great bump in that way.
Yep. All right, any other questions?
Motion to approve item 11C.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
All right. That passes four to one. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Don.
So item D is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to a ramps go of Paulsboro, New Jersey for vinyl composite tile floor replacement at the public safety complex, both on the first and second floors in an amount not to exceed $43,170, this including a contingency. So we've been doing some office logistics in the police station as people have retired. We've now, we're moving divisions together instead of being spread about in the building. And we're doing remodels. A lot of the flooring has just deteriorated through just use, so...
Five years' worth.
Yes, exactly. So that this is, we're going to replace it with a new, it's a new product. It's a vinyl. It's not a composite tile. It is more of a planking material.
Mark, when we put a basketball court in there?
Actually, I moved out of there, so now my office is available for a basketball court, so...
Motion to approve item 11D.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Rich Burburnay, come on up.
First up, salt. It's our yearly purchase for salt, road salt. We're going to ride again, as we have in the past, the state contract. I'd like to award at the unit price to, this is our salt contract to Mid-American and also as a, also include the eastern price, just in case, you know, Mid-Atlantic. If we have a, if Mid-American, if we have a very high-use season, we have an option just in case we, you know, need to go with a different supplier.
All right. Rich, we can take this on a block here.
Okay. And we are, we have a single sweeper presently. We sold recently a, one of the older units that we had, a 2015. And we'd like to go ahead and purchase a new sweeper. We had $260,000 allocated in the capital over the past couple of years. And the price of the new sweeper is $308,980. I'd like to award that to C N Wood Enviro, you know, for the purchase of an Elgin Pelican street sweeper.
All right, thank you, Rich.
Rich, super brief question. Sweet sweeper is $300,000-ish. Is this something that, you know, would we use it so much that we wouldn't want to do this in a combined, like dual municipality buy? You know, like say Narragansett needs a street sweeper, we need one? Do we have that many roads that doesn't really make any sense? Or...
Yeah, we do. And, you know, when we're running in the springtime, you know, we've got to sweep every road because of the salt and sand and all the debris. So, you know, we need these, and they're doing the same thing, by the way, at the same time. So that's the issue. And there are other times, you know, before the parade, we'll sweep Main Street. You know, there are things we do through the year, so we always need those. If we were only exclusive to that, then yes, I would say it's probably something we could share. But because we're all doing it at the same time of the year, cleaning our roads, I don't think it would work.
Thanks, Rich. Motion to approve item 11E and 11F.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, those pass. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Terry Murphy, come on up.
Good evening. I have two items. I have item 11G, which is a recommendation to expand the award of contract to Emmy O'Brien and Sons, who is working on installation of the new playground structures at Tucker Town Park and Fagan Park. We are recommending an additional $27,667 be put towards the Tucker Town Park playground for replacement of the walkway that surrounds the playground that provides ADA accessibility and also an additional tot swing for two- to five-year-olds for Tucker Town Park. We do have that funding through the rescue plan funds, and that was part of the interdepartmental ARPA agreements. And that is contingency funding for those specific projects. So that is what item 11G is. Are there any questions on that? Yes.
So I got a text from a resident who was asking about Fagan Park. So I think what they're saying is, the playground is no longer accessible for children of all ages. Do you know if there's another phase to this project? Based on what you're saying tonight, there is, correct?
Okay, no, this is specific to Tucker Town Park. The walkway and the two-to-three-year-old, two-to-five-year-old tot swing. The way that the contract was awarded to Emmy O'Brien and Sons, it was a combination of funding, so... But the $27,000 additional funding is for Tucker Town only, for the walkway to be replaced and an additional swing set for two-to-five-year-olds.
That's fair. So I think my takeaway is, this resident doesn't understand what's going to happen at Fagan Park?
I believe they're still working on Fagan Park because once they finished Tucker Town, they were going to Fagan to demolish and then install the new play structures. I cannot tell you at this moment what, where they are in that process.
I just was, fair and fine. I just was wondering if at some point in the future you could put up like a under-construction Fagan Park coming soon, so that maybe posted on social media so people, because they are confused about.
Sure.
They think it's not going to have anything.
Understood.
And then is there a porta potty there? Or is, I'm confused, is there a bathroom there?
No.
There may be for the contractor, for the contractors where at Fagan Park. I don't know off the top of my head if there is. If there is, it could be the contractors who are putting the playground in. But I'm not aware of a porta john at Fagan Park.
Because like Tucker Town has something, Russo has something, there are bathrooms at other places? Just didn't know.
In season, during the summertime and the spring, we will place porta johns in certain parks that have high activity. I do not believe Fagan Park is one of them, but I'd have to check on that.
Okay. It just, they were asking, they wanted to come to the meeting, but they couldn't make this meeting. So they sent me a... So but maybe perhaps...
I'll definitely look into that and find out, those two items.
Okay. So Rory did, too, because he plays hoops there. But if you could maybe just think social media-wise to like put some, I know Parks and Rec has a social media account, just to update people or this is still under construction because I know you might have said something months ago.
We did, we posted for both projects, but it started with Tucker Town, so it's time to update it, sure.
No problem, thank you.
Motion to approve item 11G.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Terry, before we move on, we do need a motion to continue after 11.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Let's be quick.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Oh, yeah, item H.
Item H is a request, a proposed resolution for replacing a 2007 front mount mower with bagger. We do have $47,000 approved in capital funding for that replacement, and we are recommending to purchase a Proline H800 Toro machine through the MPA contract number 629 in the amount of $45,668.32.
Motion to approve item 11H.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, Terry. Chief Moynihan, come on up.
Good evening. So this is a request to extend our services for our CIT program. So originally, I came before you with our grant funding, that we get the two federal grant awards. And we entered into an agreement with the Providence Center. These two clinicians were part of the Providence Center. They want to stay on and continue services, continue the work they're doing. It's just Providence ended their agreement with us to concentrate more on the Providence area. So we wouldn't have any change of services at all. It's the same personnel that we have been using. It would just be that we now enter into a new agreement with each of these individual clinicians specifically. The funding for this comes from the existing grant funding, so we have roughly $500,000 left from that, those grants. And so this request would be to shift over, to enter in a new agreement with these two clinicians, not to exceed the amount of the grant funding that remains available.
All right, thank you, chief. Any questions? Go ahead.
So that was my question, because we used to use the Providence Center, and they've, what, retracted from coming down here?
Yeah, they're going to concentrate more in the Providence area, catchment area, based on a new designation that they had.
Okay. And so the coverage that these two people provide, I thought it was one day a week in Washington County, like in alternating towns. What are we getting?
So when we applied for the grant, the idea is a Washington County response. They service Richmond, the North Kingstown, Narragansett. Really, they're here for all of Washington County, but their concentration is us and Narragansett. So what we have is where there's two of them, we have pretty much services five days a week, Monday through Friday, and Narragansett also has the services five days a week. If Richmond was to call or another Washington County community, then we would allow them to provide services in those communities as well.
Just to be clear, chief, are you talking about on-call those five days a week? Or are they actually engaged?
They're working and engaged, correct. And the reason why, the idea behind the Washington County is we're dealing with all the same individuals. So today, it may be someone who's handling on Old Tower Hill Road, and then tomorrow they're out down by Narragansett in the beach area. So the program has been very effective of helping individuals that are really transient, that are moving from each community. But really, where we're concentrating is South Kingstown and Narragansett. And then, as I said, they will be providing services to Richmond and any other Washington County community when needed.
Chief...
Oh, just briefly, I think this is a great program. I think that, I'm glad that you are pushing forward with this. Just keep, let us know how the combination of Turner and Sarrazin goes, you know, there's only two of them. So if it doesn't go as well as the PTC or what is their acronym? Anyway, as the previous programmatic, yeah, Providence, let us know, and we'll do that. But I think I'm in favor of this.
One thing I would add, just, you know, we're collecting data as we go in really the number of people that are receiving services. And the whole idea of this is really reducing arrests, where utilizing the services from the clinicians to get people help and so they don't have the reoccurring calls for service, the visits to the emergency room. This money from the grant, it's seed money that really allows us to explore this and see what the benefits are to our community. You know, looking at it, we probably have about two years left before we use that up, and then we'll have to really discuss what's the next steps. I'm hoping that we're going to have good data to share with the council to look at, you know, what our options are. When we look at other police departments, this is a trend that's really across the country that it's part of adding to personnel in your department. So mental health clinicians, substance use clinicians become part of our staff and work very closely with our team. And I'd love to see that in the future. And I think this grant opportunity gave us the ability now to explore this and see the benefits of the program.
All right, thank you, chief.
Motion to approve item 11I.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes.
Great.
We're going to need you back up soon, so be on standby here.
Okay, I'm on standby.
All right. I think we took up item J. I think Rich Burburnay has made clear that a potential water use ordinance will be in front of us hopefully by December.
We provided, Rich, with a water use ordinance along the lines that we discussed the council meeting about irrigating lawns and how it would only be once or twice a week, et cetera. He's looking at it, we're looking at the fine schedules, the whole bit, so...
All right, thank you, Mark. Go ahead.
So the memo that you gave us on September 24th was a lot of the information that you gave when you spoke at the previous meeting, I think it was like September 8th or whatever. So I was hoping that we could, and I've been asking and hoping, we could maybe give this to Jess Spence in your office and develop some educational material to educate the public about what water use is. Because when people start to see, like, the average... average person uses this, and this is what we saw in high-end uses, you can start to move the needle of understanding. And so I just, I'm glad that you're working on it. I heard you say, maybe in December, you might have some language fabulous. But we also need to work on the educational component, and maybe that's not Rich's wheelhouse, maybe that's Jess's wheelhouse. So maybe you can talk about how you can use what's in this memo, either to make some FAQs about, you know, why there's a water ban, what does it mean? I mean, I just Googled earlier the energy program, there's a bunch of FAQs about that. So just to have people to understand where we're headed and what's the council going to do about this. Stay tuned, you know, there'll be a meeting in December, you know, so people sort of know what's happening. Because I think there's still misinformation about why we have one. I mean, even about storage, right? People say, we can't just build more storage, we could build more storage tanks, storage tanks. But then, if the water sits, there's a problem created from that, right? So in, in March, when we have tons of water in the tanks, that's an issue, right? In July, we probably wouldn't, we would, we would need that storage tank, but we can't have a temporary tank, so to speak, right, Rich?
Yes.
I mean, people don't understand, there's just a lot, it's not as simple.
Well, what happens is the bacteria levels rise when the water sits there.
Right. So more storage isn't the answer, but people think that maybe just do that, and that's not the, you know, it's, it's going to take a lot of things.
Well, you know, I think that also something that gets lost is there's a balance between cost and benefit, and we have to find that middle ground, because the people paying their water bill are the ones that are fronting all of this cost, regardless of whether they irrigate or they don't. And we got to find that balance so that, that we're not, you know, doing too much for very little gain.
So, that, and I just wanted, I didn't, I didn't know this was going to be on the town manager's report when I wrote my email, so I appreciate that you adding it. So I'm not going to spend any more time on it. Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to move on to item K, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to amend the Rhode Island School Funding Formula to include transportation costs in determining state aid allocations, as requested by Councilmember Bergner. I believe you provided us with a draft resolution.
That's the one that we did in the spring.
Okay.
So.
Mike, your office has already looked at it?
Since it went nowhere last time around, we're going to try again with the new legislative session.
Right.
So it'd just be.
Well, last year, we were at the end of the cycle, and so we proactively agreed, let's go at the beginning of the cycle. So it's perfect, we can send it out and, I don't know how it goes, where it goes.
It goes to our General Assembly delegation, asking that they introduce the bill.
All right.
Motion to approve item K, setting the resolution for the beginning of the legislative year.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. It's going to bring us to item L, a resolution requesting to repeal the ordinance prohibiting use of the South County Bike Path from dusk to dawn, as requested by Councilmember Wedgemont. Jay?
Counselors, ladies and gentlemen, I've been re-watching Game of Thrones, and it's true, winter is coming. And winter shows up at four o'clock and nighttime is there. You have heard from fellow constituents here, that you all know and don't know, that the bike path is used not simply for recreation, but for also transportation. It is safer for pedestrians to, and bicyclists to be on bike paths at night versus on the roads. It is a town-wide policy. However, because we do have liability, I would suggest that we send this to our wonderful counselor's office to write a memo about how we can reopen the bike paths at night without opening up liability. Maybe that's putting into the CIP next year, illuminated stop signs, whether that's looking at what other towns and cities have done. But due to the fact it's eleven-ten at night, and we do have constituents who have waited out today to hear about this measure, I just want to encourage and remind you all that not all of us can drive. And it's not because some folks have gotten in trouble, it's because sometimes medically, they can't drive anymore, or they can't drive at night. And the safest way to get around is the public utilities that we've already built, which is our bike paths. And we all want a safe bike path at night when folks using lights and helmets and the proper safety procedures. So I recommend that we send this to our council's office for a great memorandum, give it to Peter, and see what he gives back to us.
I was hoping to flush out with the chief, but if we don't want to do that.
So, so, we, the, the chief wasn't here when we talked about this months ago, and was it Al? No, he wasn't. It was Al Buco, I think.
That's correct.
Correct. You can come up. I think it's important, because for me, there's two ways to go with the bike path. Is it a park, or is it a transportation road, right? And so parks and the beach close at night. There's a reason why you don't swim at night, because it's dangerous, right? You don't get in a rowboat at night, because they can't find you, because it happens. So I think there's a, there's one thing if you look at it like a park, and then one thing if you look at it like a road. So we have to try to find the right way to do it and be safe for everybody. We, we don't want, you know, a nighttime tragedy, we can't get to you for whatever reason, and we can't find you, I don't know. So you got to puzzle it out both ways.
I'm in, I'm in complete agreement, we got to puzzle it out. And I think that working together, our town solicitor and our chief of police can come up with a solution that would work best for us.
Well, there might not be, but, but there might not be a solution where people can travel at night. There could be any of those things.
No, I mean, it's true. You, they could come back to us and say, hey, this was going to cost us a hundred thousand dollars in order to update all of our intersections that do have bike, you know, transportation on there, right? That could happen. But it's eleven-ten at night, and I would, I think that we should recommend our counselor work with our chief of police to get us back information about if it's plausible, if it's plausible, how can it be done? And, you know, you wrote a good memo about the protests on top of the, of the intersections, right?
Yes.
How strategically, you have to be ambivalent to responding to those things, because technically the law is too hard to enforce, right? That was kind of the gist of the memorandum?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that the bike, right now, the bike path lives in that same gray area, right? You're not, police officers aren't arresting folks being on the bike path, but it could happen, because it's against the law.
I think it's a great point that Councilmember Bergner raises, is it, is it a mode of transportation, or is it, is it a park that we would look at, like the beaches or Old Mountain Field? And I think the gentlemen that stayed here, that have talked about it, they talk about the situation of using it as transportation with safety equipment, going to and from work or, or traveling. And, and I would tend to agree that being on a bike path maybe is safer at night than being in the roadway. But the bike paths weren't constructed for use at nighttime. There's no bike pack in the state that's open after dusk. That's consistent across the board. You know, the manager did work when we first came here, with working with DOT. Yes, I just want to bring that up, not to interrupt you. I think if, let me call DOT tomorrow, tell them the council's considering having it open at night. Would they, because they paid for all the upgrades last time. They paid for everything, one hundred percent, tens of thousands of dollars. And we'll ask them, well, if we do, if the town does that, would you pay for lighting, stops, illuminated stop signs, the whole thing? See what they say, then you can make a decision.
Works for me.
Yep.
So we'll hold off on the reasonable suspicion, probable cause type of discussion another night?
Yes. Yes, Rory. Yes, we know.
Thank you both in the audience for staying for this agenda item, and chief, you too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Based on Jay's submission in the comments tonight, I'm willing to take another look at it. It may very well be a state issue, but maybe we need to think about that.
Okay. Yeah. So I'm going to bring us to item thirteen A.
So we don't have to do anything right now? We're just going to have, we're referring it to the town manager's office?
We don't have to vote. They just know what, they're going to do something.
Great. I just was wondering, in case people in the audience were wondering.
Sharon Henderson, come on up. Thirteen A is an email dated October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, from Sharon Henderson, requesting a proclamation dedicating the planting of the Rhode Island State Tree at Liberty Green, South Kingston Town Hall, as part of the official semi-quintcentennial observance of American Independence. Sharon, we have the proclamation here, and I know it will be read on the morning of the plant, planting of the tree. So once we pass this here tonight, I'm going to hand this to you, to hold on to, to provide to us at the planting, and we'll read it at that time. Do you wish to say anything?
Yes, I did. And I wrote it down, because I'm, it's hard for me to stay awake right now. And not just because of that, because I wanted to make sure I said this. Now, I'd like to take a moment to express my appreciation to everyone in Town Hall, everyone who helped make the Liberty Project possible. Town Manager Jim Manny, for your leadership and your guidance and support with this. Deputy Town Manager Luke Murray, for his hands-on assistance, helping identify and planting site and coordinating each logistical detail of this. Jessica Spencer, Executive Assistant from the Town Manager's Office, for her consistent communication and help managing many parts of this ceremony. Terry Murphy, Parks and Recreation Staff, for coordinating essential amenities such as seating, set up collaboration with the state and town partners. And Town Clerk Nicole Romaine, for her careful work ensuring the proclamation moved smoothly and was placed on this agenda tonight. Your teamwork and dedication truly show why Town Hall, the heart of this community, was the perfect place to plant the Liberty Tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, do I hear a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes.
Thank you, Sharon.
Sharon has the proclamation right here.
I know. That's okay. We might have two.
All right, any appointments?
We did it.
There are fifteen, two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee applicants that I had sent to you guys.
Can we read them off and move them?
Isn't it just an ad hoc? It is an ad hoc. It's not anything crazy, so if you want to do it all in one swoop, as long as you list out the names, it's completely fine.
I don't have the names in front of me, so. Do you have the names, Nicole?
Yeah, give me just a second.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read them out loud?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, we have Allison Knight, Joshua Carter, Stephanie Osborne, Karen Black, Eric Wertheimer, Mallory Stedman, John Rose, Elizabeth Burke, Brady Nadine, David Gates, Nita Christie, Gail Matthews, Zach Elias, Abigail Noetzel, Noetzel, and Rebecca Pope.
Motion to approve those names. Motion to appoint. The people Nicole just named.
To.
To the two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second. Any discussion?
Hey, be nice to the vice president.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. We got a motion.
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion? Are we sure about this?
Can I just sound things down?
All in favor?
Aye.